I'll tell you, I've been to a lot of...
Well, that means you're...
I want to...
Check, check, check. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call tonight's workshop for January 29th to order. Hand gavel. Tonight's purpose, obviously, is a workshop and an orientation on the city departments, hosted by City Manager Creighton, as well as all of you, department heads. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you all for making time out of your day, especially your evening, to come here tonight and orientate us on the inner workings of each department. And we'll say that tonight, we're planning about an hour and a half orientation to start. So that's going to really limit some of the time that the council has for questions and some back and forth. So I'm going to ask the council to take some notes as they arise during the presentation. Let's try to hold them for the end. And then we'll give them all to Mr. Creighton, so he can get follow-up if there are any questions. If there's something glaring and important, as you feel need, if you see fit, please ask the question then. But let's try to go through this in a thoughtful manner. And remember, this is just an orientation. So we're going to try to stay a little bit out of the weeds, but we're going to leave that to city staff to determine what the weeds are. Okay? So we are literally here as your audience, and I'm looking forward to this. So, Mr. Creighton, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm going to use this portable mic, because I can't get to that standing mic over there. Thank you, everyone. Let's... Thank you for the introduction. Let's go around, everybody introduce themselves. And we can start with myself. I'm Peter Creighton, the city manager. Denise?
Denise Clavett, Assistant City Manager.
Eric Cousins, Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development.
Michael Channing, Director of Economic and Community Development.
Sue Clement Stilair, City Clerk.
Jill Eastman, Finance Director.
Chris Muma, Human Resource Director.
Holly Olivier, Director of Health and Social Services.
Scott Holland, Deputy Director of Public Services.
Sabrina Bess, Recreation Director.
I'm Paul Fraser, IT.
Phil Crowell, Police Chief.
Bob Hayes, Council Ward Two.
Jeremy Gacken, General Manager, Ingris Altar Facility.
Dan Goyette, Director of Public Services.
Jason Pakwin, Norway Savings Bank Arena, General Manager.
Holly Lasagna, Ward One, City Councilor.
David Young, City Council at Large.
Belinda Gary, Auburn City Councilor at Large.
Alfreda Fornier, Councilor, Ward Four.
Jase Levesque, Mayor and Tormentor of Alfreda Fornier.
Tatum, City Council, Ward Three.
Bob Chase, City Fire Chief.
Mamie Anthoini, Library Director.
Liz Allen, Communications and Compliance Manager.
Jody Durisco, Executive Assistant.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Before we get started, I'd like to make a few comments, and I'd like to ask Denise to speak as well, just to thank all the department directors for the work they did on providing the orientation information and the support from their teams in doing that. Everybody's doing a lot of work. I was talking to the mayor this morning about this, and appreciate the additional effort that you made to do this. And I want to thank Denise and Jody for the heavy lifting that they've done. They've done the lion's share of the work with the department heads. I was the editor, like the professor who goes and looks at it and makes little changes here and there. And I still missed one, which is an important one. This is a... In our document, the long version, which is 60 pages or so, it mentions a form of government. This is the council manager form of government, as everybody knows, and there was a typo on that. So, again, thank you, everyone, for what you've done. Denise, I'm going to give you this mic, and then we'll go through the orientation.
Thank you to the members of the city council and Mayor Levesque for being here this evening to listen to the departments. You know, I've been here not quite a year yet, and it's amazing when you put all this information on paper. And, you know, yes, the volume is pretty extensive. It's about 60-plus pages. But when you really read it, you really understand and begin to understand what the departments are made of, what they have going on, all the services that are provided for everybody here in Auburn. And I want to thank the department heads for their leadership, but more importantly in this document is to provide this information, that without that info, we wouldn't be able to be here this evening, to be able to give you this orientation. So I want to thank the department directors. It's really their work. Yes, we literally cut and pasted and fit in templates, but I also want to thank Jody Durisco, who has numerous hours putting this all together. And so without her help, we wouldn't have been able to be here. So, thank you, Jody. And back to Peter.
Thank you very much. So I'm pleased to start this off. Each of the department directors will be talking about their own sections or their deputy director. First, we'll begin with the city manager's office, no particular order. The terms of the department overview, obviously, the department's responsible for the day-to-day operations for the city and the strategic leadership for the city, collaboration with department directors and the mayor and the council. We're looking for continuous improvement as an organization. That's something that I think all of us are well aware of, and I think that's a priority for everyone. My office, the city manager's office, is involved in coordinating, leading special projects. That's a particularly important role that Denise plays as the Assistant City Manager, and also Jody Durisco in the role that she's playing as the Executive Assistant. Legislative advocacy is very important. And again, that's a role that Denise is playing. Terms of the city of Auburn, and the mayor and Denise and I have had a conversation about that, talked about what we'll be doing here with the legislative delegation, not just our local legislative delegation, but also the federal delegation. And then on communications and compliance with the accreditation programs that we have, the police department's accredited nationally, as is public services. And we're hoping that fire department will also become accredited. And Liz Allen is the person who does the work, is the person who helps manage the compliance program with the departments that are involved, and the communications that she is doing. She's kind of like the press secretary for the city and is doing a great job with that. There are challenges and opportunities. Working with the Auburn team and working with all of you as elected officials to be one of the best small cities in the country is obviously important. Auburn was recognized years ago as an All-America City, and we have a lot of positive things in this city, a lot of assets. And we need to develop and implement a strategic plan to take advantage of those, to determine how we're going to prioritize the projects, initiatives that we're working on. And we need to work in a highly effective manner with the schools in developing and building a new high school. This is, without a doubt, one of the most important initiatives and projects for the city. And this high school will be here for the next 30 years or more, so we need to make sure that that decision is the right one, and that we're doing the right thing. And always we're striking a balance between personnel and fiscal resources. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. The city clerk's office consists of three full-time staff, myself, Kelsey Earl is our licensed specialist, she's also the deputy city clerk, and Tammy Thatcher, she's an administrative assistant and assistant city clerk. Right now, our switchboard is... We have somebody from the A4 TD, Advancing Workforce Development for Mature Workers Program, that's manning the switchboard part-time. Unfortunately, I think we're going to be losing her shortly. The program is only, I think, a four-year program, so she's looking to move on to something else. The city clerk's office, we're often the first point of contact for visitors and callers of the city. Some of the programs and services that we offer, we're responsible for voter registration and elections. And that is nomination papers, campaign finance, it's petitions, it's attending caucuses, it's absentee voting, going out to the nursing homes to conduct absentee voting at the nursing homes. It's... A lot of people think that it's, you know, election day, it's just that one day that you're out there and, you know, people are coming out voting, but it's months of preparation. It's also hiring and training election staff, and we usually hire anywhere between 34 to 100 election workers, depending on the type of election. We're also responsible for record management. We're responsible for the care and preservation of municipal records, including vital statistic records, birth, death, and marriage records. We're responsible for attending council meetings, recording and filing orders, ordinances, and resolves, preparing agendas, and recording and filing council minutes. I'm also responsible for submitting ordinance updates to municipal codes, so that our code book is up to date and our... The code is up to date online as well. Excuse me. Also, we also manage the boards and committees by tracking vacancies and trying to recruit applicants. And also working with the Public Services Department, managing Oak Hill Cemetery. We're also... We also handle licensing and permitting. That includes marriage licenses, business licenses, garage sale permits, banner permits. We have about approximately 30 different business license types, and we license... We... I want to say we have about 200, right around 200 business licenses out there. And some of the challenges, we do have newer staff. Between the three of us, we have less than 12 years clerk experience. They are doing a great job utilizing the resources that are available to them, and they are, you know, we are sending them to classes as they become available and, you know, as the budget allows. Another challenge is the fact that we have multiple polling places. We have five polling places plus central processing, and we also have to staff the clerk's office. So it's kind of difficult when you have three full-time staff to be in, you know, multiple locations. If you have one of the polling places, if there's an issue, you know, if you have a couple of polling places that have an issue, you know, one may wait for a while before you're able to get there. It's just, it's extremely challenging. We also have difficulties recruiting and maintaining qualified election staff. Part of that is because we have multiple polling places and we process centrally. State law requires that you have a balance of Democrats and Republicans at each of the polling places, so, you know, we're often scrambling, trying to find typically Republicans to fill those slots. So also, you know, if you're... The folks that act as a warden or ward clerk, they're required to be there for the entire day, so it makes a really long day when they're, you know, showing up at the polling places at about 5:30 in the morning, and sometimes they don't get out until, you know, 10 or 11 o'clock. So, you know, it's a lot for somebody to take on, and so we're always scrambling at the last minute, trying to fill those slots. Another challenge for us is storage space. We have a very small record room. We actually don't have a vault, a fireproof vault, because the record room that we have, the floors wouldn't support the weight of a vault. So we have... We did purchase a few years back some fire-resistant cabinets, which is where we hold our birth, death, and marriage records. And, you know, we also, whenever there's an election, that's where we store our ballots. So, you know, we're limited for space, but we certainly make do, do the best we can. And that's all I have for now.
Are there any pertinent questions from the council at this point? Clarification? Okay. Mr. Creighton?
Hi. Good evening, Michael Channing. The Economic and Community Development Department is three divisions. It's one team, and we have 14 employees. We're a little bit unique, because out of the 14 employees, nine and a quarter are paid out of, other than general funds, and four and three-quarters of the positions are paid from the general fund. So we administer a TIF program, a community development block program, and those funds make up the majority of the payroll and the projects that we do through my department. The economic development section, key functions are tax increment financing. We have 20 active and two pending. One has just been passed on the Troy Street project, but of course, until the project goes through, it won't be inactive. And the other one that's pending is the Minutet Avenue project, housing project up there. We do urban downtown development, redevelopment, industrial development, mall area development, redevelopment projects along the entrance quarters, marketing, business assistance and operations, and memberships such as AdCog and Chamber of Commerce. And we sit on the boards of the Lewiston-Auburn Rail and Auburn Business Development Corporation, which we work on with Auburn Industrial Park. The planning and permit, the code, the key functions for that area is we provide a lot of information to the public. We do planning, maintain for the improvement of quality life, land use permitting, permit inspections and code compliance, and electrical maintenance, including the repairs and upgrades municipal fire alarms, descriptions, because we have our own fire alarm system, and the streetlights. We're a little unique, because we have delegated authority from the state of Maine, which a lot of municipalities do not have. So, for instance, the DOT and TEP road opening permits, a lot of them come through our office. So instead of having a six-month waiting period or having a $15,000 to $20,000 fees, our fees are around $1,000, and they're turned over a lot faster. So that really makes it an attractive area to do business in. Currently, in the planning department, this year, six months into the year, we have $14 million with the value, ending in December. And all of last year, the full year, there's $15 million of value added. So our permitting has been coming through, has been fast, and a lot of value's coming through, and it's been increasing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Channings. Not to... Great. Could you just clarify one thing? You're talking about planning, permitting, fees, 20,000 versus 1,000? I'm sorry, I just... Can you just repeat that again?
Construction permits. So the estimated construction cost this year, as of December, is $14,074,769. The same period last year, the full year would have been eight, excuse me, $18,768,000 in 2017.
He was talking about the review costs?
Review costs? Yeah, the review...
I just couldn't... I didn't capture that.
Yeah. We have...
I thought that was pretty good.
We have delegated review, and on that, and I think I've got the numbers here a little bit old. So for instance, state review fees for affordable housing, 28 lots would be about $6,000. Auburn's delegated review fees, $1,000. Commercial subdivision is $39,000 to $40,000. Auburn's $1,000. Warehouse and medical office on a 3.5-acre lot would be about $12,300. Ours is $1,000. So we could save a lot of money coming through the municipality itself, and not only that, the turnover in our time in our cities a lot quicker than if you went to state review.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Did you want to add the delegated authority?
Nope.
The CDBG program, we do housing rehab loan program, special projects such as 62 Spring Street and 68 West Dartmouth Street. The... We do loan portfolio management. Of course, we do HUD reporting, and we do a lot of other projects. We have a large portfolio. We're like a miniature bank. We have a lot of loans out. We also do rental assistant programs, security deposit programs, homebuyer programs to increase homeownership to lower-income households. So that's an ongoing program. And with the challenges, that's the three main areas we cover, the challenges that come along with the CDBG, the timeliness on that is that we can only carry one and a half time the amount that we're allocated each year. So we're allocated roughly $550,000 CDBG and $300,000 to home, which we split with the city of Lewiston. The home funds, for instance, this year, we've used, we dedicated $210,000, one for a match towards the Troy Street project and one towards Minutet Avenue. Spring Street had $250,000 dedicated to it. The CDBG funds, we... Most recent project would probably be Hampshire Street, and what we're looking at now is to utilize some of those funds, both TIF and CDBG funds, at roughly $130,000 each, $135,000 each, for $270,000 to start the process of the library area parking and walkability. So we can utilize some non-governmental, non-general fund funds that matched with federal money and double the project size. So we have a lot of projects going on outside. And that finishes up my department.
Do we have any questions for the council on Mr. Channing's presentation at this point? Mr. Titus?
Just one question. I'm looking at your operating budget of $1.7 million, and I see the labor budget, labor portion of that's $8,547,000. So there's about $900,000 left that's non-labor-related budget. Is that money, the, like, CBG funds or funds that are being used for something? What is that $900,000 comprised of in a nutshell? If not, you can send it to me.
Well, it ranges from anything from street to light management, electrical management, to the projects we have going. Our budget fluctuates a little bit, and we have special projects a lot of time, like workforce development that hasn't been expended. That's why our budget's showing it's at a lower percentage than it's really at. So a lot... We do repairs to street lights, traffic lights, and dues and subscriptions, but most of it's a largest part of our budget is PS. It's outside funds that go out for GIS support, community concepts, contracted electrical services, and inspection services.
So you said workforce development money is in there?
Workforce development was a program that was put into place a couple of years ago into the TIF that didn't pass muster with the state, so it was put into account. So right now, one that amount that holds in our account out of our total of $1.7 million, so we roughly are 44% through the fiscal year when this report was done, and it shows that we have spent 26%. In reality, if you took the workforce development and the community concepts, which is funds, money we give them to loan out for small businesses in our target areas in Auburn, we're actually at 40, roughly at 46%. So our expenditures are real close. But a lot of times, the nature of what we do, these monies get spent out at one time. They don't get taken down in twelfths, like every month. You wouldn't see 12%, 24%. You may see 100% or 0% and something like that.
But these programs, CBGD funds and programs, are part of this $1.7. I always thought that was kind of a separate account that we drove from. I didn't think it was an operating budget.
Yeah. The budget fund this year, $1,718,365. Part of that community concepts, $100,000, GIS support, $34,000, workforce development, $200,000. So it adds up quickly.
Thank you.
That's a lot of money. Any more comments? I've got one question, just for a little bit of clarification. I believe this is an expanded packet, though, so if it is, just tell me that. We're looking at what's available for the remainder of this fiscal year with regards to CDBG, CBDG, Community Block Development, CBDG. I'm back in the army again. Community Block Development Program, CBDG.
Right.
CDBG.
You can say it faster, and you can say it wrong.
Yeah.
People still not even notice, you know?
I don't think they would. I probably would sound smarter that way. And then we have home funds. And you did say a couple of things, and so I apologize if I'm redundant or if it's in the bigger packet. We have till April to spend a set amount of funds. We can't carry over more than 50% of this year's funds into next year.
Yeah, 150%. We can hold 150%.
Okay. Do you see a problem, or is there a lack of participation from the public or knowledge about some of these funds and how they can access them?
I think some of the issues were, that we see, a couple of them, once when I first got here, they had put money aside for the New Auburn project, but no project coming up in the next two years. The Hampshire Street project, they've worked on that, so those monies were expended. Right now, we're looking at putting into the Library Street, which we plan on expending by the following year. That's what we're putting those funds together, working on those plans. Some of the other issues that we face is a shift away from a program. So if you have a program put into place, and for instance, a co-op, you know, we... One night, the council decided, they worked on to put a co-op into place, and there was no plans behind that co-op, or a lot of interest for anybody to invest into a co-op. So there's money set into that account until they can then be re-delegated into another account, which is a policy issue. So we do have a board, we have an advisory committee that goes through these programs, but then at the end of the day, we answer to the council, who has funds on these programs. And when you have a two-year council, those priorities can shift around, and we're always on a two- or three-year cycle with our funds.
So there is an opportunity, though, for citizens to apply for home funds with regards to home renovations, facade, redevelopment, mix of grants, or low-interest loans. There's a vehicle for those underutilized funds that are earmarked directly for utilization by residents?
Yeah. We have funds not only on the residential end, but on the business end, that if we believe that the... If those programs stayed stable through the years, they would be more well-known. We have the storefront traffic acceleration program, which helps downtown businesses bring up the traffic into those businesses. And those grants are available, that can be a loan that's forgivable after five years, up to $50,000. years, up to fifty thousand dollars. So, that really encourages someone that we have, if we have openings in some of these businesses, to come in and be able to start that business up or to enhance their storefront, to get the traffic in the downtown. That's been a priority of the, of the city of Auburn.
That's great. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that. Maybe Mr. Creighton has a follow-up or a takeaway? Or Denise? We could have maybe a kind of a, a list or easily consumable idea, because, I mean, if these funds, federal funds are available, and we do have a finite window of accessibility to them, maybe there's something that the council can do to help spur some of that, that, uh, don't use it before we lose it, so to speak. So, thank you very much for that. Is there anything else from the council on economic development? I know it's something near and dear to all of us. No? Mr. Walker? Good? Okay. Next.
Next up is Jill, Jill Eastman, the Finance Director.
Thank you. The Finance Department is really made up of four divisions. Would be Accounting, which includes administration, tax collection, assessing, and facilities. The Administration Accounting Division takes care of working with the manager's office on the budget, doing all the financial reporting, writing fiscal policy, purchasing, the annual audit, payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, reconciling all of the city's accounts. We maintain the fixed asset list and financial analysis. The Tax Collector's Office does all the property tax billing and collection. They also register boats, motor vehicles, ATVs, snowmobiles, dog licensing, fishing, and hunting licenses as well. They are the frontline staff that sees the people who come through the door. And I have three full, we have twelve full-time people total in finance. The tax collection side is four full-time. Accounting is three. Facilities is really one and a half, and assessing is three. The Assessors Office, they, they do the valuation on all the city properties. They maintain all of those records, maintain all of the exemptions, and prepare the tax commitment every year. And then, our Facilities Director has been working for the last five years on creating a master plan. There was never a master plan of the city's facilities. He's done quite a good job of getting that together. And he manages all, all the city buildings and manages the maintenance staff. He also is in charge of purchasing and preparing with department, different departments, RFPs, and doing the, the bid openings and awarding the bids. Some of the challenges and opportunities that we have is, the city has received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the last twenty-three years in a row. So, we, and in order to, to do that and maintain that, we have to comply with all new regulations from the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So, with the help of the auditors, we do that every year so that we can maintain that. I also am responsible for all bonding. And so, that, that certificate goes a long way for bond rating agencies. So, that, that's really an important thing that we need to keep up. I work with departments to prioritize the CIP needs for the city, as well as with management. And I, one of the challenges that we're going to have over the next few years, couple of years, is doing a succession plan for finance, because I will, coming up on retirement. So, that's something we really need to think about.
Twenty thirty-one?
Huh? Yeah. And that, I think that's one of our, going to be one of the biggest challenges facing the city over the next couple of years, is that I would like to get someone in place that can learn from me and, you know, take, take the reins.
Any comments or questions from the council?
So, Jill, in terms of a succession plan, is it, do you see kind of a timeframe for that, or you're just beginning to think about it?
Oh, I've been thinking about it. And then, after what happened this month, I'm thinking about it more. So, I will be sixty-five this year. So, I would like to work a couple more years, but I probably won't go much past that. So, I think it's, you know, something that we really should think about in the next budget.
Councilor Titus?
Uh, just real quick for new counselors. I want to say the past couple of years, Jill has worked very well with counselors that have questions, and has always had a great answer, a complete answer, when you have one, when it relates to some of this stuff, because it's very complicated. She has a good way of explaining it, too. So, I want, I appreciate that, Jill. And going forward, there's always questions, and she's always been quick to answer any of mine in a very timely manner and in a way that I can understand it. So, thank you, Jill. I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the council? If not, I think we're going to move on. Actually, one, one quick question, I'm sorry. Facilities and purchasing and management of those facilities, and when you define that, we're talking about everything from housekeeping to repairs and maintenance staff?
Yes.
That's the manager, okay, the management aspect. Is this individual or group have any impact or any work done with school department or schools, those facilities, or is that separate from your department?
That's, uh, separate. They have their own facilities manager at the school department.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Creighton?
Next is the Fire Department. The Fire Chief wasn't able to be here today due to family matters, so the Deputy Fire Chief, Assistant Fire Chief, who is new on the job, how long have you been on the job?
Uh, this is the start of the fifth week.
The fifth week. He's told me that he is going to take this, so I said, okay.
Be gentle on me, but I'm happy to try.
This is going to be the hardest one you ever did.
Yeah. So, forgive me if I turn my back on occasion to talk through the slides, but in general, the Fire Department, as you would expect, is responsible for response to fires, explosions, natural disasters. But in general, you know, industry-wide, Fire Department should become the catch-all for, you know, emergencies in the community, outside of the things that fall in the law enforcement realm. But we really have to have capacities to respond to anything that may or may not occur in the community. To include, of course, Auburn Fire providing nine-one-one ambulance service for the city of Auburn. The next slide would be our, our structural organization. Thank you. Okay. Um, so, we, uh, there's a big initiative now, along with what would be just regular nine-one-one response. We're trying to grow the initiative for community risk reduction. And the chief has taken a real strategic look at community risk reduction and, and what we can do in the organization through the effective use of our fire prevention officer and our fire prevention programs, community risk analysis, but trying to take the, the proactive approach ahead of emergencies, if you will, to analyze the community, understand what might exist out there, and what programs and procedures we can put in place to try to reduce that. Certainly, on, on the simplest sense, that goes toward, you know, reducing the, trying to reduce through education the occurrence of fires. But we can't reduce all fires, so through community risk reduction, we also try to limit the damage or the loss that might occur when they do occur. So, it's kind of a two-headed approach. Again, providing the nine-one-one ambulance service to the city. But, um, right now, ambulance transports account for about three-quarters of our calls for service. I should say what we would consider rescues, which would be patients that we transport, but that also includes motor vehicle crashes. We do water rescues. We have to have the capabilities for water rescues, confined space, rope, all of those hazards that might exist in a community. We're the agency that's going to be called for response to it. And so, there's a pheromone involved with, with maintaining those competencies and keeping that capacity and ability in town. The challenges that the department has is to meet the service expectations with limited resources. That, the call volumes can be shown to continue to trend up. And more importantly, the diversity of the types of calls that we have to do continues to increase. You know, it, looking back historically, the fire service was really kind of a one-horse show. It was firefighting. But that diversity of calls and having good preparedness in the equipment, the resources and the training to be able to do that is a real challenge. We want to improve community perception and improve planning of risk prevention. And I think both of these are part of an outward approach that the department's trying to take, part of our community risk analysis and also community education, to build the, the image of the department, as well as the opportunity for the department to interact with citizens and, and build a relationship there. The opportunities we have moving forward are to work to become, as was said, the, an accredited agency, as other departments have. Those wheels have started, and we're starting to get our ducks in a row for that process. And so, we're eager to work on that. That's been expressed to me, you know, in my new phase here, as, as being a priority for the organization. So, we'll work on that moving forward. Express the opportunity for greater involvement in community groups and trying to foster that community dialogue and community opportunity for risk prevention. And then, a big part of that in, in today's world is a greater presence on social media platforms. That goes toward community awareness, ability to reduce risk, to, to push education out to folks, its ability to reach people very quickly. But it also goes toward recruitment and retention and those types of things from a personnel perspective as well. And so, those are the opportunities that are highlighted. So, happy to take any questions.
Anybody from the council have any questions about this? Uh, Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you go for a calls for service, and with our growing community and the different people that come in, is there, have you discovered any language barriers?
Um, again, in my limited time, I have gotten that feedback and that there's some opportunity there for us to overcome those. I'm not intimate with the resources that are available in the city at this point for the responders. But as any organization, as any community gets more diverse, there's the need to try to, and I think this goes to the objective that we're trying to reach, is to have a better finger on the pulse of the community and understand that. And that will help mold what, the tools we need to have for our response. And it, when I say tools, we don't just think of, of equipment, but it's, it's educational tools, whether it be through dialogue and, and the ability to communicate and all of those things. I think that that whole approach toward a better understanding of community needs picks that up. But we are hearing that, that is a challenge. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? If I could, Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief, correct? Deputy Chief, okay. Quick question on requests for service. Again, if you don't know the answer, that's fine, you know?
Understood.
Completely understandable. But I'm looking at, um, just so I can better understand this, looking at an annual fire response of one hundred and twenty-five in, in 2016, and then EMS thirty-four hundred, and then other. Said other was just, well, let me back up a little. When a fire call happens, is that automatically triggered response by EMS?
No, it does not. The fire calls are categorized based on their severity, and there's different levels of response based on the information that we get from the dispatch center. So, a full alarm, for example, would basically tap all of the resources from the city, from all of the stations, which does include the folks that are working on the rescue, responding as firefighters to be able to perform that function on the fire ground, as a firefighter or an EMS provider. They're dual-purpose.
So, they're all, they're all first and foremost firefighters, second with the EMS plus train?
Yep, absolutely. If we're going out to a fire, those folks are tapped to be firefighting resources as needed. Yep.
And then, if you could, again, what defines other?
So, other is a, can be broken out, it's a really broad category, but the fire category really is the occurrence of which we've encountered fire. But the, the other, a large part of that are fire alarm activations, for example. So, we're, we're, we're going under the anticipation that it was a fire, because it comes in as a fire alarm in an apartment building or a hotel. But upon getting there, we discover it wasn't an actual fire. There was some other reason it was set off. Those types of things would be grouped in the other categories.
Got it. Thank you very much. And we do have, from a commercial standpoint, I believe, I know we have this on, on, with Chief Crowell's side of the House with regards to security systems and response, and actually fees charged to the public for excessive responses. Do we have that same policy in the Fire Department with those types of calls?
Um, I do not know that for sure. I can get back to you.
No, great, thank you. And I think, and Chief Crowell knows what I'm talking about, I believe.
Yep.
Okay.
Nuance, a, a building structure for nuisance alarms.
Yeah, right, absolutely. I think I just actually paid five dollars to have mine renewed.
Yeah.
So...
I think we are doing that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Titus, you have something?
Just one question. And maybe, maybe you can answer this, maybe not, but maybe something for a future discussion. But on the challenges, I took note of the first one, which said limited resources to meet service expectations. So, I guess what this board would have to know is what the service expectations are that you're referring to and what the limitations are that are causing a problem there. Because that's a big sentence. I mean, that right there is probably books and volumes of explanation.
Yeah.
So, I would want to hear more about that.
Absolutely. I, I wholly agree. I think that part of what, as the, the chief takes on a strategic visioning for the department, level of service is always, I think, in all organizations, it's kind of a moving goal, but I think we need to put our finger on the pulse of what that level of service expectation is at this moment. And, and then, we use our process of looking at the community for trying to anticipate what it's going to be in the future. And I can't necessarily speak to, to that and how he's di, you know, described that currently right now, but I think the point you're making is great for another meeting. Let's define what the, what the expectation of the council and the city at large is for the service delivery objectives.
Yeah, I'd like to know what, what that means, so we can address it if we need to.
I have a, one more question.
Please, Councilor.
In terms of transport, are you doing also a fair amount of just transport that is not emergency transport? Is that, would that be under other as well?
Uh, we're not currently doing any facility-to-facility transport. Our, our emergency, our, our EMS transports are from nine-one-one calls where we're responding for emergencies.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor? Yeah, one, yes, see, I just have one more question. That's okay. Personnel?
Yes.
Hiring, are there any current job openings? Are we having, are you having issues filling those jobs?
Uh, there are currently no openings. We just had our EMS coordinator started today, so that was a vacant position that was filled. And his principal role is to administer the EMS program, if you will, as a division of the organization. But at this point, that fills out the contingency.
Great, thank you very much, Deputy Chief. Mr. Creighton?
Yes, to go back to what Councilor Titus was asking, the orientation, of course, is not intended to go into a budget presentation. We'll be doing that soon enough, as everybody knows. But I'm going to give you an example of, I think, what this is referring to in terms of meeting service expectations with limited resources. We're doing a fire study, as you know, in Taylor Pond. One of the issues that has come up is that the community has been, the city has been without a water tanker. I don't know if I have the right terminology, Bob, but for quite some time. So, that's an issue that we're going to have to address in terms of fire safety. That's one example. But time will come soon enough for us to get into all of those. This was never intended to be a discussion about the budget, but that's just one example.
Thank you. Mr. Creighton, this might be a good time if we're done with fire. It's forty-five minutes past the start. Did you want to take a, a short five-minute break?
Sure.
Buy a break and continue on, if that's okay with everyone here? Okay. So, let's, uh, let's just stand adjourned for about seven minutes, bathroom stretch, six and a half, maybe, then we'll rejoin. maybe, then we'll rejoin.
Trust funds are for people who maybe won't qualify based on their income or eligibility otherwise, and it's got to last me the entire fiscal year. So that's been a challenge, especially this winter. And another challenge is the immigration guidelines. The asylum seekers are required to wait 150 days before they can apply for their work card, so they're kind of in limbo for at least five months after they arrive. Opportunities are providing information and assurance to my clients to get the on-the-job training that they need to find successful employment. We also offer guidance with the resume writing, the interviewing skills, and in gaining employment and financial independence, some of my clients I get to know very well, and the ones that I feel confident in, I do offer reference letters and speak with prospective employers in order to help them find jobs and gain that financial independence.
Turn over to the council. Any questions, comments?
I know that it's more a bigger job than just what is in your resume or portfolio. One question, have you seen a change in the numbers of new mainers?
It has leveled off substantially. I do think, again, it's the available housing. There was an influx, and then when the housing was kind of filled up, there've kind of been a holding pattern until someone moves out or space becomes available.
Just to follow up that, and I have a couple other questions. When you said the housing, we're talking new mainers specifically in a refugee status with all one, or, I'm sorry, the-
Well, there's two different types of immigrants. Refugees are the vetted individuals. When they come in, they can get a job right-
Asylum.
Asylum seekers are primarily what we have here.
The 150-day wait.
Yes.
Does that wait also apply to any type of Auburn Housing or subsidized housing vouchers, or-
It shouldn't. It shouldn't. It's specifically to be able to get a job. But so many things delay that because once they get their work card, they have to apply for their social security card, and they can't do that until they get their work card. So it's another month or two after that 150 days goes by.
So if you could just, and this is great, and thank you very much. I had no idea that the state reimbursed us 70% of all qualified expenditures. That's, that is really eye-opening when we look at things. When, when you're looking at the challenges of housing and the trust funds for heating assistance, lie heap, you know, that, this is, you're talking like a donut hole, like a gap coverage, if you would-
Again, some of these individuals don't qualify for lie heaps. Some of them are middle-income families who just are over by, you know, a couple thousand dollars, and that's when they come to see me. And the trust fund is specifically for people who would not qualify for general assistance, but I am able to dip into these trust funds to get them a while or hoping or whatever.
And then your down payment or your deposit fund program, I believe you have?
Yes. That's, that's something we don't utilize very often. It's for families that are homeless or near homeless, and it has to be due to an eviction that they did not cause. So, for example, if they're being evicted because they stopped paying their rent, then they wouldn't be eligible for that.
But if the building was condemned or something-
Right. Then we can take the applications-
Fire or something like that?
Yes. Yes.
Maybe if, if it could, city manager, could we add that to that kind of list of available resources for the community that we talked about under economic development? I'm just wondering if some of those programs aren't being, if we need to publicize them a little bit more. Thank you very much for that. There was, oh, one other question, last one. You can just kind of give us, give me an estimate on this one. How do we compare with, or how does your department compare size, budget versus like-size communities or close proximity? Lewiston, let's say, South Portland-
I can tell you Lewiston, Lewiston, South Portland, they have a much higher influx than, than we do. I think there are six full-time employees in Lewiston, and I can't remember what their budget was last year, but it was, I think, close to a million, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars. So with our office, obviously, we're a smaller municipality, so there's just not as many options for housing, and that's the big thing. If they can't find an apartment, they're not really considered a resident, and if there's no apartment, then they have to go elsewhere.
Got it. Thank you very much. So proportionally, we're pretty much-
Yes.
At the low end of the donut hole.
Yes.
Okay. And that's, again, demand generated. Okay. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that info. Counselor Titus?
Thank you. The program that we had established a few months back, and forgive me for not knowing the name, that was allowing people to stay in their homes and not have to move.
Yes.
Is there anyone, have we had anybody qualify for that, and have we used it since?
That's usually, the school department refers people to, it's my office and Community Development and Auburn Housing Authority. We sit down and meet with Michelle, the Assistant Superintendent, to go over any potential families, and we have had a couple that have met the criteria, so that's moving in the right direction.
So it seems like we've already had an effect. That's good. We'll get a report, I would assume.
Yes.
Once we have some time that's passed. Terrific.
Can you expand on that, just so everybody else knows what you're referring to? And I only know a little bit about it, the, the stay-in-your-home program.
I mean, I don't know all the details. Maybe you can explain it a little better.
It's, it's really new to me as well. It's something that that, in Community Development, kind of came up with, but it's a program where students who are at risk of being evicted, try to keep them in the school district. Sometimes it's, you know, and the mom loses the job, or, you know, some other circumstance, and this is a different guideline than my office. I kind of sit in and just go over the applications with them and put in my, you know, opinions on if I think they're eligible. But it's, it's something outside of my office's protocol, I guess you'd say.
Yep. The last council had identified one of the issues we had in the school was, was students transitioning from school to school, and it was disrupting their education, both leaving a school or going into a new area or new school mid-year. So this is one program that was an experiment primarily to see if we could help those students at least stay in for the full calendar year, and if they had to move, move in the summer, but try to keep them there and maybe permanently, but not have that disruption in the middle of the school year. And if it works, we just felt it would be something we could expand upon if it actually shows results and is, is working on that one problem.
Yep.
And so, Mr. Chaney, that falls under your department? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, it's, it's under one of our services, and correct, it was a startup last year. They were going to start with one school only. They decided to put it across the whole district, and with that, that is exactly what his intent is, to make sure that if their parents are having a hard time, that they would at least be able to stay in that school system to the end of the year, and we'll be revisiting that in probably two, three more months when the CAC committee meets.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
And one question I want to have too, and I think this relates to something that we need to look at going forward. When you say lack of available housing in Auburn, and I know there's been inventories done, that there are numerous apartments that could be rehabbed and become usable apartments. We're building new ones, obviously, when we have obvious opportunities like Spring Street and that, but that's really not the, the answer. And I always felt that we ought to look at our housing stock and see if there's ways that we can make some of that usable as a low-income or middle-income type situation. But that's another program altogether, because it's not livable right now, but a lot of them could be, so.
The, the problem that we run into is our guidelines are so low. For example, a single individual moving into the area, they're only eligible for a studio apartment. Usually, we start at 450 is what we cover, so it's almost impossible to find-
And there isn't a percentage. You're not part of like, like Auburn Housing, which offers just subsidy.
That's different. Yeah, that's-
You're different. You're offering-
Yes.
Like full rent assistance.
Yes.
And you can't offer partial rent assistance.
We can. We can do that, but usually it's just people that come in, like I said, new, new mainers will come in, and they're desperate for a place to live, and even an apartment for three or four people, it's like 650, maybe 750 if we went to the high end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor?
I just have one question. As you're training and providing job placement, what, what is your opinion of the available job placement here in the city when they're ready and they're ready to go and you've got them ready?
They, my clients are really mostly ambitious people, especially, again, back to the new mainers. They come over and they really want to work. They're proud people. They volunteer doing workfare. They, they want to get the work cards and get over to the career center and get their English classes going and be out on the job. And I will say, 99% of my new mainers will have a job within two or three weeks after they get their social security cards.
So there's the availability as well. Yeah. Great. Yeah.
Okay. I don't think there's anything further. We can move on, please. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Chris?
Hi, I'm Chris Muma, the Human Resource Director for the City of Auburn. The other small department in the city is Human Resources. We are a department of two, myself along with Sherri Buck, who's the Human Resource Specialist. Our main job is to hire the best employees to serve the City of Auburn. We want people who are specialties in their field as well as people who understand that we are public servants and here to serve the citizens, that this isn't just a job that makes a paycheck. So it's a very competitive world out there, but we want, we really strive to get the best employees for the job. We also administer the employee benefits and coordinate the city's workers' comp programs to help prevent workplace injuries and manage costs. We really strive to provide good benefits to the employees. Typically, pay doesn't, isn't as high as the benefits are for public employees, and so it's one of the things that we can offer people who are looking to work for us that will help them stay here and continue work throughout their career, not unlike Jill. We try to keep our workers' comp costs down. Also, we provide a good safety program, work very hard with the City of Auburn employees to keep injuries low. Unfortunately, it only takes one injury to raise the cost. You can have, you know, a limited amount of injuries and still have a very high workers' comp budget, but we really do try and maintain a good standard. And last year, we did win the SHAPE Award for here in this Auburn Hall, actually. We also work with the department directors to help train and other opportunities for their employees, as well as assist them with contract negotiations, labor law, any conflict resolution that is needed. We're there for the department directors as well. The challenges that we see are, in fact, to hire and retain employees. It's very, very competitive, and public servants are actually not a dime a dozen, as some may think. It's a very specialized field, and so as it becomes harder and harder for all employers to find people to work, it's especially hard for us as well, and it's extremely competitive. Some of the municipalities offer sign-on bonuses or extra perks that we have to compete with on that. That's probably the biggest challenge we have right now. Where, when I first started, we'd have close to 80 to 100 applications for one job. We are lucky if we get like 10 applications now for a job, so. Another one of the challenges is, again, reducing the workers' comp claims. Again, it only takes one injury to cause that budget to skyrocket, but again, we work with our department directors to really do our best to keep our safety standards in place and to reduce as much workplace injury as possible. We also have the capabilities of going paperless. We just do not have the time or the staff to do that. We do have everything in place. It's just very time-consuming. We have to keep our records forever, or basically until the employee passes away, and even then we still have to keep them, and we would like to go completely paperless, but again, that's a very time-consuming project. For information, it'd be easy just to hire somebody, but again, that information is all very confidential, so it's, it's quite a challenge for us, but we're getting there. We're getting there. Some of the opportunities that I see is to train and educate the HR staff. We're both, although I worked in HR for 17 years prior to being in the director's role, this is the first time that I'm a director, and this is the first time that Sherri is a HR specialist. So we want to take advantage as much training that we can get. Also, we have a very young department director staff, and this is another opportunity that I see that we could be doing is training these department directors for the future. And then lastly, to expand the wellness program, which long-term effects of our wellness program is to help reduce the health insurance costs in the future. We have a great wellness program here, and we'd like to expand on that. We apply for a grant every single year, and we're trying to really move forward and see what kind of opportunities we can come with, up with that we haven't done in the future. Any questions?
I told you you're going to be the most difficult one tonight. Did I say that? Anybody from the council have any questions on human resources? I've got just a few questions. You alluded to going paperless. Are you referring to an HRIS, HRIS system, Human Resources I something or other, whatever that stands for, system? Completely online?
We, we have a system in place. What we call it is Munis, but actual documents signed, whether it be W4s, the applications, any background checks, all those come on paper. So we'd like to scan them and be able to utilize Munis more. And we do have the capabilities. We have all the equipment. Again, it's just a matter of putting, taking the time to do it, and we have, there's only two of us in our department. Not only with our active employees, but we have years and years and years of retiree files in our archives.
You, we mentioned in kind of a theme is people, as well as it should be. That's what governments are made up of, of course. What is the current open vacancy or vacancies right now for the city? Do we have unfilled positions?
We currently, I think, I think we just completed all our full-time positions, I think.
As far as I know.
As far as I know. I think I just did say that. We have camp counselors, if anybody's interested.
I've been there. I've done that before, no.
And you're 10 minutes an hour now.
Yeah.
I might, actually. Be more than I make today, here at this job.
I believe we're at full staff.
Full staff. There's, it's, so the second follow-up to that is volunteer opportunities. I mean, we were talking about taking historical paperwork and legacy files and starting that tedious, unbelievably large job of scanning and documenting. Do we have volunteer opportunities? Maybe just not in your department. If you, I'm not sure who coordinates that citywide, or if it's done department by department or through your office?
Yep. So currently, we work with Holly. I have an asylum or a new mainer working in my office right now. There are some challenges with that. As if we left our country and went to their country and was told to put things in alphabetical order, we might have some difficulties. So-
Fair enough.
We, we do have a little bit of difficulties there, but they're actually, a lot of them are very educated, and the one we have now is doing a phenomenal job. So we have those people assisting us there, as well as the program that Sue was talking about, which is the, you know, the Senior Citizen Program. We have volunteer opportunities there. But again, it's all, there was some challenges that come with that as well. And anybody who does do volunteer work for Human Resources has to have a background check as well as sign a confidentiality release, so.
Maybe as a follow-up, we could look at master list of volunteer opportunities and maybe coordinate with our co-chairs for our Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. Maybe there's some folks in that committee or community that might want to come and help. I know my mom actually asked me about this the other day, and I, well, she can't, by the way, so if she applies, no. Sorry, Mom, if you're watching, but yes, I think there might be some availability.
The Harris office might be a good option.
Yeah, no.
I will.
No. Meeting's going south.
Spare time after being a camp counselor.
Been there. Okay, and on that note, have we, just one thing, you mentioned camp counselors. Have we networked out with the YMCA's camp counseling program, training program? There might be. They have one. I didn't know either. Just throw that out there. So. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeremy?
Jeremy Gatcombe, General Manager of the Ingersoll Turf Facility. My facility consists, consists of one full-time staff, myself, and a shared full-time staff with the Recreation Department, so one and half of us. Our goal is to provide a safe and fun indoor training facility for not only the Auburn community, but the surrounding communities as well. We're reaching wide areas from the Portland to the Augusta region and all in between. Our goal is to basically provide indoor space during the quote-unquote offseason from the traditional outdoor sports. In Ingersoll, we don't envision as a soccer facility. It's not a baseball, softball facility. It's an overall recreation facility where we cover all ages from 2 to 99. So we have everything in between, whether it's senior citizen walking, premier soccer organizations training in the facility. We try and hit all spectrums, all sports, all ages. Some of the challenges and opportunities we have with the facility. So the first challenge is space. We are basically at capacity at this point. That's both field and batting cages. We're currently turning some groups away because we just physically don't have enough time to fit everybody in, and that's, again, internal programs we run, whether it be a mom and dad just coming in, hitting in the cages with their kids, or a premier soccer group in the facility. We're running into basically being at full capacity of, of the facility itself. The second is staffing. Again, it was just myself in a shared full-time position, and we run everything from the cleaning of the building, the booking of the facility, the running of the adult and youth programs, and everything that goes along with those. So staffing has definitely been a challenge in the first couple of years of, of operation. The next challenge we have is booking and taking requests for turf time. Currently, I'm using basically an Excel spreadsheet for all my bookings and relying on phone calls, text messages, emails for people who want to get in the building. Again, whether it's a mom and dad who are just looking to hit in the cage or a premier group coming in the facility. If we can find a way to kind of streamline that and get the request in a more organized fashion, it should help with getting people bookings and keeping it consistent. Some of the opportunities we have, Ingersoll definitely fills a void during the long winter months. There's a lot of kids who don't play basketball, swim, cheer, wrestle, whatever the, the standard winter sport is. Now that Ingersoll's around, they can play soccer year-round. They can train for baseball, softball year-round, or just go out and be active, whether it's a Mom and Me soccer class, whether it's youth archery lessons, which we have going on tonight. It, it allows kids to come out and do something that they love and not just play basketball to stay busy, play hockey to stay busy. They get to play a passion that they, they really love. Another one would be adding a cooling system to the facility. Currently, we are basically inoperable from June until September, October. If it's 90 degrees outside, it's about 95 degrees in the building. So during the summer months, we pretty much shut down, and we have to do all our business from October until May, if we're lucky. If we're able to get some type of AC or cooling system, we could run summer camps. We could do youth adult leagues all summer long and keep, keep people inside and keep them active and not going out to the fields. And the next one is kind of touching on the first challenge, looking for new and larger space. You know, Ingersoll's been great. It's, it's booked. People love it. We just need more space, whether it be a bigger field, a facility with higher roof, so we can do more live gameplay. That's kind of the challenge right now with the facility itself.
That's it?
That's it.
Hold on. Wait a second. Look, you, we, we missed a page here. Am I reading this correctly, that you're about break-even or profitable on an annual basis?
Yep. We are profitable.
Could you, could you do yourself a favor and kind of pat yourself on the back and tell us the fact that, you know, you actually make money for the city? I mean, don't be humble here. This is your time to shine.
Yeah, I know.
So it is, you know, I mean, you guys are actually, it looks like, over the last couple of years, consistent on revenue versus expense. You're packed all the time, and that's the nutshell, right?
Yep. Absolutely.
Good.
Pretty cut and dry.
That's pretty good. I'll open it up. I've got a couple of comments. But counsel, do you have anything? Any questions, comments on this?
I visited a little while ago, so I got the pre-tour, and I was really amazed at what you're offering, and I'm also amazed at you're working at it all the time. It's a beautiful place. I was thinking of my kids when they were younger. They would have loved that, but it's because of your resourcefulness that it's, it's successful financially as well. It's, it's very, very neat, very organized and orderly, so you're, you're a gem. Thank you for being there.
Thank you.
No, he is. He's great.
Is there, Ms. Creighton? Oh, Leroy. But Mr. Counselor Walker, please.
Thank you. See, I, I came back. I want, I want to thank you, Jeremy. You have done a great job with this facility, and I was around before the facility was what it is today, running it as a hockey rink. This gentleman has turned this thing totally around and stood beside me when we said we were not going to tear this building down. We weren't going to mothball it, and we weren't going to do a lot of other things. So he has taken it to the level where it is, and the pat on the back he sure needs, but what he really needs is for us to understand, if we want him to run this place the way it should be run, he needs the cooling system and he needs it now, because summer is just around the corner, and he can't plan in June for July. He needs to start planning now. So we really need to get on this as a council and say, is it profitable to do this? And it would be, I know it would be, you just need to know what's in the future, but we really need this in our CIP, and we, we need to promise that it's going to happen so he can plan now for the summer coming. Thank you.
To follow, to follow up on that and make sure Counselor Walker talks to me after this meeting, could we, it's some valid points here, and you're talking about what your needs are, Jeremy, and it's part of a bigger conversation. I'm a huge proponent of what you're doing, obviously. I mean, the, the PR that we're getting from the commu, from Southern Maine is huge on this. I'm shocked at people that are calling me up going, hey, I live two hours away, but I'm in Auburn today. You want to have, you want to have lunch. It happened a couple of weeks ago, because they're there to visit that facility. So you talk about cooling systems. We're talking about, you know, CIP needs, and I was wondering, again, not right now, but maybe as part of a, kind of a workshop to be scheduled very soon before summer, look at an ROI model on this. What does this mean? You're not going to be 100% accurate, never are in anything like this, but if a cooling system is added in, what would that do to finances by being open and extending your season? That's one. Second, maybe a little bit deeper dive into exploring what a larger facility looks like, what that could possibly look like cost-wise, ROI-wise. Is there something to be said about not having a cooling, cooling system in Ingersoll if there was a potential for a larger facility with a cooling system or vice versa? Does, does that make sense? Hey, counsel, I hope that makes sense, but if you're exploring something like this, I'd like to challenge the city to think a little bit broader and larger, because there might be a longer-term need. Counselor Walker, does that make sense to you? I want to make sure what I'm saying on this one passes your snuff test.
It, it all makes sense, but I, I, again, I want to throw this out there. We know what plans are for the future, and we can say we want this in the future. Sometimes the future is 20 years out. In 20 years from now, that means that we don't use this for 20 summers going forward. So I, I, I want to see both. I want to see that whole plan, but I want to see what it's going to cost us to cool this building now so that we can make plans for what's going to happen in the next five to 10 years, because a facility like he would like to see is going to cost us anyways from $7 million plus going forward. So that ain't going to happen tomorrow. So a cooling system could happen tomorrow.
Yeah. I'm going to counter Counselor Walker's $7 million estimate, by the way, just so the record states. Continuing. We're good. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Gary?
Following the same train of thought, if we're going to expand, thank you. If we're going to follow the same train of thought of expanding the building, we've also got to figure out expanding the parking, because you've got the Ingersoll turf facility. If we expand that, how it's going to correlate with the Ingersoll, I mean, with the hasty armory, and then how that's going to spill over with the new senior center, because with the current senior center, we have issue with parking. I mean, my goal in my, my mind is to turn that, that whole complex in the top-notch center complex where people would be proud to come to do all form of activities, because right now we have a great gem there. We just need to shine it up and expand it a little more. The capabilities of developing that is endless, and now's the time, as the good Counselor Walker says, we should vision today for the future and start plotting that course.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just- Mr. Mayor, just one more, to go along with Belinda. There was a master plan 20 years ago for Pettingill Park. If you look at that master plan, you'll see the hillside that's behind the Ingersoll was planned to build a big soccer field at one time. Instead of building a big soccer field, we could build a huge parking lot or a parking garage if it was necessary for all three or four buildings that are at Pettingill Park. But I would say the cost would be less to build a parking lot versus a parking garage.
Maybe these are all topics that we can take into consideration in a near-future workshop meeting. Absolutely agree. Thank you. Mr. Creighton?
Next up is Paul.
Good evening. I'm Paul Fraser. I'd like to start by thanking Chris for her comment about young department directors. I can only presume that she means age-wise, because I've been doing this for 25 years. Jill's the only person here that was present when I came onboard, that long time ago. So, thank you, Chris.
I thought I said majority.
I have a department of four and a half people, including myself. That comprises IT, GIS, Great Falls Television, and their services. We support a staff of 270 user accounts. It's about 130 computers, half a dozen servers, three virtual hosts, et cetera, et cetera. I'm accused of droning, I'm going to try to keep this really short. Our job is to keep track of what's going on in the world and making sure that the city is following the best practices, that we provide the tools to staff that they need to do their jobs, and that we do it in a way that's prudent and protective of our resources, that we protect the city's resources. That's our big push. I apologize for sentence four there, it makes no sense to me. I shouldn't have written that. I am shamed that I actually put a sentence like that on a PowerPoint. Challenges, as with every other department, it's staffing and it's resources. We have more and more challenges, more and more things going on, more and more cyber threats, more and more breaches that we hear about all the time. And we're trying to patch all those holes with a very small staff. It's the way it is, and it's improving. We have increased staff over the last year, and we're hoping to increase again in this coming year in the budget that you're going to be deliberating very shortly. But that's our, that's our big thing. We have a lot more requests from staff than we have internal IT staff to deal with. We can outsource some things, but it can get a little tricky. Confidentialities, the security of the system, makes it very difficult to just go out and hire an intern to do things, because we have to hand them the keys to the kingdom in order for them to do a job. So we're very conscious of that, and we're very, you know, keeping track of what's going on, where. Education for our staff, things are changing all the time. We are sending two of our staff to school to improve their skill set, and we take an opportunity every chance we can to get free training through MMA or through vendors to learn more about our, the environment that IT works in, constantly changing. Cybersecurity is my big emphasis these days. The threat surface that the city has is increasing every day. We are learning about more things that we thought were secure and had been doing for years, and turns out aren't. If you've been following the meltdown and the spectrum stories in the newspaper, discover that every one of our computers has a built-in vulnerability. These are the things that we are trying to keep ahead of and making sure that staff are keeping ahead of. It's an opportunity. We are, one of the ways that we're dealing with that is that we are transferring that risk to the outside. So we're pushing a lot of our applications out to the cloud. We started doing this about two years ago. We started with GIS and with the building's access controls, door locks, the programming of schedules and things like that are all on cloud-based. We've just moved our financial applications to the cloud, and we're in the midst of a major change in how we operate, moving all of our Office Suite applications to Office 365 and everything being stored cloud-based. That's going to let us retire some servers that are reaching end-of-life, so we're not going to expend money on replacing hardware that has reached the end of its useful term. We're putting more and more of our resources out where there are entire teams of security people working on keeping them safe instead of me. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody from the council, any questions? Counselor Gary?
I promise to be very brief. When you talk about putting stuff on the cloud, do you also keep a hard copy, so in case something files up on the cloud, you have a backup copy?
We do not. And part of the reason for pushing that is to not have to have copies here. We're basically gambling that Microsoft, with its thousands and thousands and thousands of customers, are they, we're pushing all that to them. It becomes their responsibility. If they get destroyed and that's all gone, basically Seattle is gone and we're in big trouble. I'm not coming into work that day. I am barricading myself in Litchfield and hoarding food.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Walker?
Thank you. Paul, I want, again, I want to reach back a long time ago when you first came here. You came right after we got rid of the typewriters. And I can tell you one thing for sure, it didn't cost us anywhere near the millions it costs us today for all these nice toys we have all over the city. But it's time that changes, and we have to change with time. So I want to thank you, though. You have been a great person to be able to come to, work with, and to see at the city halls as long as I've worked here and still you're working here. So thank you, really. It's been a pleasure to work with you all these years.
Leroy, I'd probably go back, all 25 of those years, you were working over there when I started.
Yeah, yeah, we were having a lot of fun.
Supervisor, those were simpler times.
Ribbons, instead of going to the cloud, yes.
You'll have an abacus then. You replaced it.
Actually, we were on NDS back then.
Quick question. On Great Falls TV, I know we have obviously, you know, resources allotted to that. This is a joint service agreement with Lewiston, am I wrong on that?
Correct, that's correct.
That's correct. So does Lewiston have equal number of staff working on the GFTV on their side? Or do they, how does that partnership work?
All the official GFTV staff work for the city of Auburn. We are funded by both cities, and they have the responsibility for recording their meetings. So all of their government meetings are recorded by their staff. Our government meetings are recorded by Brian, who is watching us now and making faces at us, probably.
So this operating budget, is this net of the Lewiston contribution? Or is that, not to go down that budgetary road, and I don't want to do that, but just so we can understand that as a net, just our contribution?
That is the budget, that is expenditures. There is no revenues, I don't think, in that page that you're looking at.
Revenue's already in the revenue account.
Okay, so this is just a gross number?
That is what it costs. The portions of it which are Great Falls TV are equally split between Lewiston and Auburn.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Is there anything else on the council before we move on? No? Mr. Creighton?
Jason. Jason Packman, Norway Savings Bank Arena, General Manager. The Norway Savings Bank Arena is the only dual-sheet ice arena in the state. Closest thing to it is Family Ice Arena and Casco Bay Arena. They've got roughly, it is about a 500-yard strip of land between both rinks. One operates as an outdoor ice arena, and one operates as an indoor. Of course, we've got both of ours underneath one roof. We operate a small but tight-knit staff for an arena of our size. We have five full-time staff members, including myself, an administrative assistant, sales, marketing, and events coordinator, a facility supervisor, and a full-time ice technician. We also supplement our staff with eight part-time staff members to actually round out for our facility's needs. We cover everything from ice resurfacing to cleaning the restrooms, emptying the trashcans, and scheduling all the ice and events that we take, that take place at the arena. We do have a, we do have two tenants that sublet space from us. Mike Violet and Upper Level Pizza and Grill operates our concessions for us. And we have Jamie Burgoyne and Blue Line Sporting Goods, that operates a full-service pro shop in our facility. We have 500 to 600 youth hockey players, second-largest youth hockey organization in the state with the main Gladiators, five different high school hockey teams, three boys varsity teams, two girls varsity teams, and two JV programs as well. Just the boys and girls. Basically factor in 45 high school varsity games per year. We also have one club college team with Central Maine Community College, starting in August of 2018. We have a junior program, the Twin City Thunder. We have six hockey clinics roughly per year that run camps clinic-style over a month, a two-month timeframe. We have one current non-ice event with our RV show, which operates in April. Last year, we had 6,000 people come through the facility with that event. We have four adult pickup groups, and we have five organized adult hockey leagues. We do operate as an enterprise fund, and we also strive to provide skating opportunities to community members through our public skating, shinny hockey offerings. We basically fund our budget through those opportunities, ice rentals, special events, tournaments, and our sponsorship dollars. Our challenges and opportunities. Our biggest challenge right now is our shoulder season rentals. Hockey in this area, in the state, is still technically a year-round, four-season sport. However, we do have a strong youth following that do partake in seasonal sports. During our shoulder months, April through mid-June, we actually do ice out rink number one to mitigate some ice costs as far as keeping that sheet frozen, and try to utilize that space to bring in additional events that do not require that ice. We do have enough rental needs to actually support one single sheet, and we utilize rink number two to operate that, our smaller seating capacity, without the concrete floor. That one operates with a sand or stone dust floor. Our seating capacity does limit what we can do for events. Rink number one, which is our largest seating capacity, we have roughly a total capacity of 1,100 seats, or 1,100 capacity when the ice is in. It's roughly 831 seats and another roughly 200 standing room. We do have a 200-person mezzanine, however, viewing does get a little awkward when you've only got one set of windows facing the rink. Our last challenge would be our debt service and our competitive market. We actually have three ice arenas just in the Lewiston-Auburn area that we compete with. And we do have a debt service that amasses for nearly 50% of our operational budget. Opportunities, we do have the junior hockey program coming in this summer, in August, which will actually, with proper marketing, bring a new and wider base of individuals visiting the area. Our youth hockey programs have an uptick of roughly 20% to 30% during Olympic years. So hopefully, we'll be able to see and expect that growth to continue, and non-ice-related event growth during our shoulder seasons.
No, thank you very much for that. Open up to the council for any comments? Any questions?
A few years, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few years ago, when we began the arena, I was frustrated with the amount of time, or the lack of time that it was open for, you know, individual skaters. And the fact that we had school vacations and it was not open during school vacations, which is a perfect opportunity. So that's just laying the background where I was at that time. I've recently spoken with a friend of mine and her adult daughters who live in Jay. They come up here to skate, to do ice skating, and they ask the question, is it possible that there can be, you know, an increase of the hours? I mean, have you maximized the amount of time that you can for individual skaters? I know there's a lot of former hockey players who are my age and would like to come and roll, you know, ice skate, and also some people who are working in the area and if we're looking at developing a community where people can stay and work in this community. If they have an hour of lunch, they could head out there to, you know, that'd be the great thing to do for exercise. So what are your thoughts on that?
Certainly. We actually operate public skates on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 11:00 to 1:00 PM to catch that lunch crowd. We also have our public skating currently from 3:10 to 4:40 PM on Sunday afternoons. We are looking to try and expand and bring in some additional skating opportunities for our community.
Yeah, I think additional ones would be great. And is there a way that you're marketing those times in as far as letting people know how would they, is it on your website? I haven't looked at it for a while.
Yes, we do post that on our website. We do also utilize our Facebook page, and we will start to look at other avenues to get that word out.
I was happy to see the little ones, the little hockey players. My grand, my great nephew once was four years old, and they dressed him up for the first time, and all he did was fell over on his face because he couldn't stand up after he had all the gear on. But he became a really good hockey player. But I think this is great, you know, to have here, and we might as well make the best of it that we can and really, you know, maximize it as, if at all possible. And I went upstairs to speak with, you know, the owner of, you know, the Food Court, and asked how things were going, and he said he's really happy. He said he's, the hours are not, you know, 40 hours a week, but he finds the same families coming up to eat, and he's keeping those prices down. And so people are really happy with that, too, and he's saying that the business has been very good. So it's nice to hear these good news.
Absolutely.
Any other comments from the council?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Thank you. Again, I want to say thank you to you. I know you've done a lot of hard work, and I know you were put in a position for a while there that you really were stuck in between a rock and a hard place. When we have managers that up and leave because of something either better that comes along, or they're just tired of the job they're doing, and we got, you know, put between that rock and a hard place, and you pulled us out of it. And luckily, you prevailed by getting the job. Now we'll pick on you a little bit. The hockey world up there, we all understand, is a big thing. We all understand we built the arena because we needed more ice and more ice time. But back with the council that I sat on when we built this arena, we said and promised the people that sat out in this audience that we would have public skating. Now, what I want you to take away from this is, I know you've done everything that you feel comfortable with and plan on doing more for public skating. What I want you to go away with is, we are carrying on our budget, on the taxpayers' back, about $200,000 a year that we're paying. That buys one heck of a lot of ice time. And I don't feel that the public skating are getting their money's worth when you look at it that way. So that's why I want you to, you know, go away tonight thinking, boy, you know, what can I buy really for $200,000 up there for ice time for public skating? And then how are we going to fit that in? And not all one to two, or one to three, or three to four. That is all the working-class times. I want something in the evenings. We've been crying for Fridays, some Saturdays. Hockey is not the only thing we built that building for. Thank you.
Is there any more comments from the council? I just want to touch upon a little bit, if I could, a couple of questions on non-ice-related event growth and our opportunities. When, just to clarify, I know you said it, I'm sorry, I didn't pick it up, I was taking notes, but you closed down the cement-based ice arena in the summer?
Correct, yes. Rink one, the cement base, gets closed down April 1st.
That's the larger one?
Yes.
Okay, got it. So the sand base is the one that you keep the ice on year-round?
Correct.
Okay. So on that, on the larger rink, what dates do you close, again?
It's April 1st to about mid-June. Mid-June, our local area high schools and some from outside of the area actually have their hands-on period where they can get on the ice with their coaching staffs, and we'll actually book a large amount of ice from mid-June to the end of July. We try to couple those timeframes with large-scale hockey clinics and camps.
That's for the smaller one?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're closing the large rink in mid-April. Question, maybe this could help, and doesn't have to be commented on now, but you have April school vacation coming up, third week in April, historically. Is there any possibility, if you don't have, you know, for not shutting down the large rink and opening that up for open skate, and, you know, substantially more often for April vacation, school, rec department skate?
It makes it a little difficult to keep that rink open with our RV show that we have coming in, because they utilize both rinks. We only have one floor covering for the ice. However, rink number two, we can actually still provide skating times for public skating during that timeframe. And it actually works out much better because all of our skate rentals, all of our public rentals, all of our public skating items are actually located on that rink.
Okay. Just trying to help because we have noticed that there's a larger demand for public skate. That brings me in nicely, nice segue, your non-ice-related event growth. RV show, could you just tell us a little bit more about that? I mean, other than the fact that there's RVs there, we'll get that one, but how many days? Is there a revenue stream? What's the demand out there that you think for non-ice-related activities?
I think the non-ice activity, non-ice-related activities are a nice addition to the facility, whereas it's, it can be a difficult time to actually sell ice and actually help support the facility, bring something different to the area, brings a different clientele, a different visitor to the city of Auburn. Our RV show, like I said, had 6,000 people come in. We had them coming from as far away as Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and as far north as, I want to say it was the Bangor, Bangor area. That show is scheduled out under a three-year contract, which was initiated last year. Roughly, we did not make any money on it on the first year because of the items we had to basically add to the facility to make it event-friendly and life-safety-friendly. From that standpoint forward, this year, we actually get a $20,000 rental for roughly three days of rental space. They load in on a Friday. They have their show on Saturday all day. Sunday, they run a partial day ending at four o'clock with our staff. We actually come back out, remove the ice decking off of rink two, reinstall all boards and glass, and we could actually have a group skating at ten o'clock at night.
Okay, so $20,000 gross over a three-day event. I ask, and this might have been before your time, but how did we secure that contract?
They actually approached us originally. They were looking to move from the Portland area. They were at an indoor turf facility down there, whose name I won't mention, and basically saw the dual-sheet facility as an opportunity to kind of do something different, and having the centralized location here in Auburn, they felt that they could actually have a better travel pattern for people to come from the north as well.
Their first-year feedback was positive?
Very positive. In the first day, Saturday, they actually exceeded their largest show in Portland as far as attendance. So we actually did about roughly 2,200 more visitors than we did, than they did in Portland with their largest show, which took place about five, six years ago.
Counselor Walker?
Thank you. I was around when he was doing this at that event, and I want you to know that he may not have made a whole lot of money at that event, but he sure brought in a lot of people that spent a lot of money in just one mile of that arena. So we have to look at what it has done for our area, and a lot of people came from out of town and didn't come down in the morning and go home that night. We filled motels, we filled restaurants where you and I couldn't even get into, a couple of them, they were so full. So, you know, the overall, I guess, the greatness of all of it was because of what they did to bring this event. So we have to look at that as well as what did it cost us to put it on?
No, that's a really great point, and that's why I was giving some pause here because I was actually thinking that there's a relevant data point within the sports tourism study that talks about economic activity on a per-day, per-person backing. We think about it in a very, you know, focused way about sports tourism, but I'm really hard-pressed to find a difference between sports tourism event at your arena and an RV show that brings in 6,000 people. Counselor Walker's point, they're still spending money on restaurants, there's an economic activity or multiplier within the community. Yeah, very impressive, and I think there's, again, I think maybe as a follow-up, Mr. Crane, that we look at some of these events, the economic impact directly to the city, but also indirectly, and start talking about that, and maybe welding, you know, kind of putting that through our roadmap and initiatives on how do we get more RV shows, or-ish, whatever it could be. I know there's a boat show at that place he won't mention down in Portland, that would be pretty cool because I like boats. Just throwing that out there. We'll leave it at that, then, the place that we won't mention. Great, thank you very much, Jeremy, for that. Is there any other questions from the council? Anyone? No? Okay.
All right, Mayor, Council, thanks. Just a brief department overview. So our police department is divided up into three divisions. We work through our support services operation, which really helps manage fleet, takes care of equipment, ensures that our traffic enforcement, parking enforcement, has several different functions that they need to help meet the services of the other officers. Our patrol division is our largest department, and that's just meeting the demand of calls for service. We're hitting close to just over 30,000 calls for service a year, and those can range from everything from motor vehicle accidents. We talk about economic development and bringing more people into the community. There's the opposite side to that where then we have more backing into vehicles in a parking lot, those things. That generates our call volume. So that's, when you take a look at our call volume, I think one person asked me a while ago, well, our population base is either dropping or staying the same, but yet if you look at our call volume, it's been steadily increasing. It's because we're bringing more people into our community on a daily basis, and when we have that, that is driving our calls for service. So our patrol division, that's our main focus, ensuring that there's staff available that's going to go out and hit those calls when they come in. We, being a service center, I can't tell you that, you know, the weekends are a busy time, and Tuesday and Wednesday are a slow time. If you look at our call volume, it stays steady every day. We start spiking our calls, they start climbing around that commute hour, around nine A.M. They continue climbing all the way till about five P.M. We get a little dip until seven, and then they start spiking back up again after seven, and we stay pretty steady till about one A.M. So there's not really any real peaks and valleys within our call volume, except there is that nice, you know, around one A.M. to six A.M., we're able to catch up on reporting and make sure we're hitting our businesses to ensure they're staying safe and secure. And then our criminal investigation division, that's another area where we, our team does a great job. There are more and more challenges that are coming with law enforcement as far as what's required to present a case to the district attorney's office now for prosecution. In the past, you could just have an officer up and just testify, and that was good enough. Today, you have to have lab results, you have to have a lot more documentation, you have to, unfortunately, with jurors who watch a lot of CSI on TV, they expect that you're going to have all of that. Our team does a great job, they, we do our best to utilize resources that are outside of our agency. We partner a lot with our federal agencies because they have a lot more resources for us, and so we can bring cases to them and partner with them to work on these types of investigations. We have three drug investigators that are just trying to focus on the opioid issues that we're dealing with. That is a steady increase for us. We have two of those agents are assigned to the main drug enforcement agency. What's nice with that partnership is that what you don't see in the expense column, in the revenue column, we actually get reimbursed for those two officers through the state for them being assigned. However, they are focused on Auburn-type cases, although it is a regional task force. And then we also have one officer that's assigned to the federal task force, which is HIDA, and that officer is connected through Portland Office, but again, working regionally with our federal cases. We have, we monitor cases as they come in and determine whether or not we can manage this case at a state level, or whether or not a federal level is the best way to go for prosecution. You know, your mom is more than welcome to volunteer with us. We have a great, great volunteer program.
You are down in the basement.
That's right, we are in the basement. Hopefully not for much longer, but we are in the basement. But we had over 4,000 volunteer hours last year, and so over a thousand of those hours were volunteers within the PD and then also our citizen patrol unit. And so our citizen patrol teams love to go out. We get them working on checking vacant buildings, which we have many of, sometimes just permanent vacancy, but also if somebody's going on vacation and they submit to us a vacant house check, then that gets in that list, and those volunteers go out as well as officers just to keep an eye on those buildings. And then they do love to write parking tickets and handicap spaces. So our seniors love to go out and hit those handicap spaces, and so they do a great job for that, for us, because a lot of times we're, we try not to be a call-driven agency, but it's really difficult. We try to make sure that we are anticipating problem areas, putting officers where we need them. We have 67 square miles in Auburn to cover. It's a huge, huge area with the ninth-largest city for square miles in the country. So that's a lot of coverage for us. And so when you think about that, that challenge that we have, there's a lot of coverage that we need to make sure we're hitting. So we try to keep our officers in the areas that they need to be in rather than having them crisscross throughout the city. So our volunteers do a great job helping us with that. And then the rest of those volunteer hours are for programs that we run. So whether it's at the PAL Center or our national night-out programs, those are rad. We have a self-defense class for women, so those are mostly volunteers that come in and help us with that. So great, great volunteer program. Our challenges, recruitment and retention, you've been hearing it. This is, I think this is going to be for every agency. Twenty-five years ago, I applied for the city, there were 350 of us that were at Hasty to take a written test and for two positions. Today, if I can get 10 people, I'm doing really well. So, and then of those 10, usually 50% of them are cut because of drug activity or criminal history. So really, we're only looking at four or five at a time for a candidate position. So we do have one patrol vacancy currently within the agency. A lot of our timing has to go with the academy. There's, so all law enforcement go to the Criminal Justice Academy, there are only two classes a year. Many times, we're on a waiting list on those. They only take 60, roughly around 65 cadets a year. Sometimes when we put our name in for the list, you know, we're like number 120 on the list, waiting for those 65 positions. So we do, we work closely with the academy. We know that, closer we work with them, we provide trainers up at the academy that assist us on the list placement, and so we work our, you know, best with those opportunities. Our retention's the other piece, you know, how do we keep officers here? I think we do a great job as far as providing benefits. We're working on salaries, negotiations this last time, I think went really well. Our schedule, our schedule is a selling point for us, but then it's also about providing opportunities. Officers want more opportunities within their career, and so as we can provide more opportunities, that's how we're going to retain staff. Facility for us, we came here temporarily, it was a five-year temporarily, temporary move. We're in year eight, so we're slightly beyond that. This building was not designed for a police department. We, you know, we have some staff that are up on the third floor, we have staff that are down in the basement. The basement is not suitable for staff, and so we have officers that are crammed into small locker rooms. We don't have the proper bathroom facilities. We have evidence storage challenges. If you think about our cases and keeping the integrity of evidence is critical, we have challenges with that. We don't have the proper air, air system to be able to transfer air within where we keep our evidence in storage. If you think about 40 pounds of marijuana of evidence coming in and then not having proper air, that's a challenge. So especially when somebody's working in that environment all day, and that's the environment that they're in. So facility has got a big challenge, you're going to hear us talk about that in the budget process, that's just, we were at that breaking point. I think the staff here in the building has been very patient with us coming into this building because, again, it's not, it's not designed for us. We have officers that, they're in a courtyard that was designed for a walking courtyard. We moved the barriers on the end so the cruisers could get in, and when you have, you have people coming in to pay their tax bill, and you have an officer checking their cruiser and taking their rifle out and checking their rifle as they're walking by, it doesn't give people a real warm feeling as they're coming into Auburn Hall. So we do our best to try to make sure that we mitigate some of that, but it's still a challenge for us. The next challenge I listed was retail crime. Some might say, well, why is that opioid? It is, it's all tied together, but our organized retail crime is skyrocketing, and any given day, we have organized teams that come into our community and commit thefts. This is all connecting back to drugs. So follow the drugs, this is where this is happening. We are working our best with our pawn shops because what's happening is the thefts are taking place, and they're bringing them to pawn shops, or they're bringing them back into the businesses to try to get refunds, and so we're working a lot with our retail, but it is a driving force for our time right now. And so we're working through some plans, we'll be working on initiative coming up this spring with some of our retail organizations, but retail crime is certainly on the rise, and it's an issue that we're faced with. I mean, a few years ago, I was telling you that it was burglaries because we had all the copper in every building that was vacant that was stolen out. You know, criminals will find other opportunities, and right now, it's retail. And so that's a driving force for us. I'd love to be able to tell you that Auburn has a really low crime rate. We don't, I don't like the uniform crime reporting process, I think it's a flawed system. The federal government finally recognized that, and in 2020, they'll be leaving that system of reporting and reporting out under NIBERS, which is a national incident-based reporting system instead of a uniform crime reporting. The challenge and the difference with that is that a homicide has the same value as a $10 shoplifting in that system. So if you look at our community, we have very low violent crime, however, we have a higher property crime. So when people will compare Auburn with Lewiston, why does Lewiston have a lower crime rate than Auburn? Well, we're a service center, we have a lot of retail thefts, and those thefts drive that number. And so of our 1,100, I think it's around 1,100 index crimes, close to 900 of those are all thefts. So when you look at our violent crime, it's really low. So those are our challenges and things that we'll be working towards in the future.
Does counsel have any questions, comments? Anybody know one? Okay, good. Counselor Walker, I'm just joking with you, please.
Well, once again, thank you, Chief. You have a wonderful department. I know all your people work very hard, and from the Neighborhood Watch Group, everyone said to make sure that, they said, "Thank you." We had a great meeting the other night there, Suprina was there and whatever, anyways, the whole night went great. You're coming to the United New Auburn Association tomorrow night, and again, if it wasn't for people like the chief and his workers, a lot of these groups wouldn't even be here, they wouldn't even be part of the city. And because of the chief and his people that work hard for him, these activities, the good ones, do happen in our city, and people are really glad that we do have them. And I think in the last few years, we've really grown these types of groups so that they become a positive thing, and we got away from maybe the negative part of what was going on. And again, I don't agree with everything with the PAL, but I think you have a great facility over there running. I think I would have done it a little different than you, but, you know, you're the chief and I'm not, so that's okay. I'm just a counselor with one vote, but you've done a great job, you've got a great department, and thank you.
Thank you, counsel. We do, we have a super staff, they are committed, dedicated to the citizens. We have four Neighborhood Watch Groups that, we look at them as ambassadors for the community, and so they get information every month, they're getting information that most of the citizens have no idea what's taking place. We are looking to open up our fifth location for a Neighborhood Watch Group, and that will be in the PAL Center neighborhood, which we're working towards, and we're hoping to launch that by the spring.
Very good, Chief, thank you. One comment primarily to the council. I had the pleasure and privilege to do a ride-around with an officer from the department early on into the fall, and though they would not let me drive, no matter how much I pleaded and begged, it was quite eye-opening on a lot of different fronts, and I encourage everybody to go and contact the chief, and this is a protocol, this is a thing that any citizen could do, actually. Fill out your waiver forms, I mean, and you're right there, attached to the hip of an officer for a full shift, and if you really want to see and talk about And if you really want to see and talk about what's going on in Auburn, do it on a Friday or Saturday night, start at nine, nine o'clock shift, and go, and go on. And I, I learned a lot in that process. I'm actually looking forward to doing it again, probably when the weather warms up a little bit. So, I encourage everyone to do that, not just to the Counsel, but in the community as well. Thank you, Chief. Oh, Counsel.
Yes, I meant to get together with you, because I would love to do that. And just a few days ago, I think it was probably last week or so, I, I've just moved out of the neighborhood a few months ago. And right in that neighborhood, right in front of my house, there was an incident. And it was a shooting. And your policemen were there immediately. And I've been talking to my, my former neighbors, and they're just so impressed, and they felt so safe because of that. And I know I've had different, you know, opportunities to speak with, you know, the police, various policemen. And they, they really are ambassadors, you know, to this city. They're kind, they're compassionate, they're sort of like a iron fist in a velvet glove. And, you know, they're, they, they're very informative, they handle themselves so well, they're so well-trained. And, you know, the fear factor is, is gone when policeman comes, and we're not afraid. They seem to be, you know, people who are friends, who understand, they're family people too. But they're just a magnificent group of people, and, and I really commend you for, you know, leading them. Because it, leadership starts at the top.
Mr. Creighton, we'll move on.
Good evening, I'm Dan Goyette, the Public Services Director. My department consists of sixty-three employees. We have a budget, not including solid waste, of about three-and-a-half million dollars in operating funds, four-and-a-half million if it includes solid waste. We do manage the solid waste contract for the city. In addition, we manage all the parks in terms of their maintenance, mowing, upkeep. Sabrina in Recreation actually manages the programming of those parks. We handle all the highway maintenance, the traffic safety, and we handle fleet services for the city. Fleet services for the city, we include the police department, certain fire vehicles. We do not handle the fire apparatus or the ambulances. We will do the support vehicles, a few of the pickup trucks and those sorts of things. And all of public services equipment as well. I'll jump right into the challenges for the city. Public perception versus reality is a big challenge for us in that, as the Chief mentioned, City of Auburn is sixty-seven square miles. That's a lot of ground to cover. We have one of the largest in terms of road miles maintained by public services departments in the state, if not the largest. I haven't found one larger. We are not a large department compared to other municipalities when it comes to size. We are actually quite small when it comes to people per mile of road maintenance. So, when it comes to people's roadways, the public perception versus reality thing is, we might only plow that one street once every eight hours, but we do get it that once every eight hours. Yes, it's not maintained like it is Center Street, where we're there at least once every two hours, if not, not once an hour. But a lot, we, our roads, as you, if you're not familiar with our winter road maintenance plan, I will bring that up as part of the budget process, and go through that and explain how we do maintain our roads in the winter, because that's primarily when people are concerned in how we're doing that. We have roads that are maintained every two, four, six, and eight hours. And that's based on the roadway system, the traffic counts, and the location. So, a road by East Auburn School might not be traveled that much, but we maintain it because it's the school route. So, that's kind of the, the process of that. Funding is the biggest, if not the most challenging thing, in that we could make the city the, every road perfect, every sideways perfect, but it's just going to cost a lot of money. So, we struggle with stretching the dollars that you do afford our department as far as they can go, and getting as much done as we can with that, that money. Regulatory requirements, a lot of this has to do with stormwater. Our department is part of the, well, our department is highway engineering and parks. The Engineering Department handles our stormwater maintenance, or our stormwater regulatory requirements. And that falls back on public works in that we are required to sweep every street. We are required to map every catch base. And we are required to map all our underground pipe systems and rate them, and look for what they call illicit discharges. That's people making, dumping their oil down a catch basin, and people with illegal hookups to our stormwater system with their sewer system. All of these things are federally mandated, but there's no federal funds included with that federal mandate. So, you have municipalities that have gone a different route other than Auburn, and they do quote-unquote, "stormwater fee," or as is more commonly referred to, "a rain tax" to pay for that. Auburn has chosen not to go that route, but what that means is that cost has to be borne in other ways. So, because we are held accountable for that. Another problem that, or challenge, I should say, is the aging infrastructure. Our systems are old. Our bridges are old, our roads are old. So, when it comes to repairing these things, it's a lot of money. I'm not going to pretend it's not. A mile of roadway reconstructed with sidewalks and just stormwater, that means no improvement to the gas system, no improvement to the water system, no improvement to the sewer system, is upwards of three million dollars a mile. So, when you take a, a City of Auburn, which has five-hundred-and-fifteen lane miles of roadway, that's a big number. And so, as part of our CIP program, we prioritize roads based on condition, based on the usage, and based on the classification, and also based on what we can get for matching funds from both the state and federal government. Some of the opportunities that we see is increased public education, communication. Liz handles a lot of our public notice information, a lot of our Facebook page information. We've made a concerted effort, especially this winter, in getting the information out there, "Hey, we're going to be doing snow removal on this street, there's a parking ban from here to here." We're trying to get people as aware as possible of what we're doing, so that we don't inconvenience them by being in their way. They know we're going to be in their way. And at the same time, it makes us much more efficient in our work if everyone on a street realizes, "Hey, I need to get my car off the road." I can, it makes my, my work a lot easier, or my employees' work a lot easier, because we don't have to worry about trying to squeeze through two cars, or plow around a car, or those sorts of things. Another opportunity is the increase in transportation network for multiple users that be, not necessarily everyone thinks of bike lanes along the side of the road. This is multi-use path around Lake Auburn. This is a sidewalk filling in a gap where there was, where you have a sidewalk that ends here, and a sidewalk that ends a thousand feet away, but there's nothing in the middle. This is increasing the sidewalks around the schools. The new high school, part of the state formula does not allow sidewalk construction, is part of a state-funded school. So, wherever that school is, I don't know where that is. The, the side, there's no sidewalk, if there's no sidewalk to it now, it's not going to be built as part of the school project, unless the city pays for it themselves. So, it's important to include that sort of foresight, and it's, it's an opportunity to make sure that everyone can get to that school and use it. That's pretty much it, and that's all I had. Are there any questions?
Just a quick question. I was thinking in terms of how expensive it is, and I know you don't even have, you know, the funds for salt, that kind of thing, which would make it work so much easier. Is there something that citizens can do, you know, to help, you know, alleviate some of that stuff? I mean, I know one of the things you're doing is you're plowing one side of the road for sidewalk for the kids to go to school, which is great. I think it's a lot of money to do both sides of a street.
Typically, we do both sides of the street for sidewalks.
Oh, Davis Avenue doesn't have-
It depends, it depends on the route. Something like Park Avenue only has a sidewalk on one side of the road.
Yes.
Dennison Street, sections have one side of the road, we'll maintain that side. Sections of Dennison Street have both sides, we do both sides. Same thing with Turner Street and Center Street, for example, both sides are all maintained. The streets that we do maintain the sidewalks on, we typically try to do both sides.
And when you did Davis Avenue, just a fabulous job. It was all many, many, many years coming, and it was done well, because it had to be done right from the beginning. Everything had to be pulled up and everything, the sidewalks are great. It's a, and unfortunately, I've moved in another district, so I can't enjoy it for the rest of my life, but I think others will. It's really a great job. Your people have been very responsive whenever there's any questions or needs or anything like that. And that's really important, because if people are living there, this is where their life is, and they want it to be nice. So, I, I would just encourage you to think of some things that can happen, not just with snow removal or whatever, but in the general year. What can citizens do, or what do, is there anything that we shouldn't be doing that citizens can do to help defray the cost? Because it's getting more and more expensive. The roads are getting really bad, and you're trying to keep up, I know that. And I, you know, the potholes right now that we're going over is unbelievable. In front of the post office on Rodman Road, for example, it's just horrible.
Rodman Road will be paved, if not this summer, next summer.
Okay, great. So, just an idea, you know, I'd be open to some ideas.
Is there any other questions from the Counsel? Counselor Walker? Counselor? Just checking. Counselor Titus?
Yes. Just one thing I wanted to bring up. First of all, it's my, as I've been a Counsel, I've had many opportunities to speak with the department because of a citizen complaint, and I want to say that it's been handled very well. Most everybody's been emailing me back saying, "Thank you for that response." But I guess I wanted to clarify, I know that I've used a couple of things in the past to get information to you. I know that the reported function on our website's one. And now, Peter, I don't know if I've talked to you about this, I know that you like to have pretty much conversations with the counselors, but do you want to have, if there's a citizen complaint? In the past, I've always gone right to Dan or to that department to see if they can resolve it, but I guess we'd like, I'd like to know, clarify. I know the reported function's there, but if a citizen catches me on the street and says, "Hey, this is bad, I want to be able to report it to somebody." And in the past, it's worked well.
Yes.
And you guys have responded well. So, I guess I just wanted to clarify the process.
We've talked about that. I think what makes common sense is what you should do. It sounds like a politician, doesn't it?
And that's my job. That's my job.
I think, for a lot of reasons, it's good for the City Manager's Office to know what the complaints are. We're trying to develop a tracking system. That was my experience when I was with the City of Lewiston many years ago. I think that works well. But I also understand there are times when counselors are going to want to reach out to Dan or any of the department directors, and I understand that. I just think we need to use common sense, and it is important for us to be able to track those. It's amazing the number of council constituent concerns, I'll call them, that we get in a year. How many did you get at Public Services?
I think we're around six thousand.
Yeah, so, it doesn't make sense for six thousand to go through the City Manager's Office, probably.
Take that back. It's six thousand work orders. In terms of citizen complaints, I'm sure it's over a thousand.
So, I guess what I would say, if you, if you have a, if you have something that is, that you think should come to me, that's more complicated or more challenging or whatever, we're happy to accept those. Jody is great about that, and Denise has been as well. Otherwise, work with Dan and work with the other department directors.
I would say, in terms of my department, if it's a simple, someone reported to me that they would like, you know, that we hit your mailbox while we were plowing, that's, you know, it, it's, it's a work order, it's, it's an easy task versus something of substance like, "My road is falling apart, they rebuilt it wrong all the while, it goes in my basement." Now, that's something I think that I would prefer run through the manager's office, something of, like, significant substance, it's going to require policy, I guess.
Is there any comments from the Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Walker, Counselor Walker?
I want to say, thank you. Thank you, Dan. In, in New Auburn, we are very happy that, next to the fire station, you put us a nice little sandhouse there. For those of you from the New Auburn area, we used to go out there and we had to have a pick, dynamite, and whatever else, because it was always frozen. Now, we can go in there with just a shovel and actually fill up three or four pails with dirt that you can use after. So, we want to say thank you. And the other thing, I think your department has done one heck of a job this year. The only trouble we had was Mother Nature had to put that freezing rain on us. But other than that, everything was great, and thank you, and thank all you guys.
A couple of questions, or comments. One, kind of piggybacking off Counselor Walker's comment about the sandshacks, has it probably been done, but I don't know if it could be revisited, maybe including a shovel with a big, thick chain on the end of it there, so some of us without large pickups could still, you know, get sand without lugging a shovel and a bucket? I don't even know if that's possible.
We can, I'm sure our welder could come up with some system.
I'm sure. Okay, thank you. Second, have you noticed an increase in infrastructure support, road reconstruction, maintenance, increased plow times on roadways that are major thoroughfares between outlying towns and Auburn?
There are a, how do I say? There are a few roads in the City of Auburn that I will say Auburn residents very rarely use, that are primarily just cut-throughs for outlying communities to get to the city, that we are asked to maintain, grade, plow more often and spend more money than I would prefer to, because I want to make sure they're safe for the, that traveling public. But at the same time, aren't direct benefits for the City of Auburn, other than those people may be working in the City of Auburn and using the City of Auburn for services and shopping and that sort of thing.
But not contributing to the overall maintenance of their access point?
Correct.
There is, though, and correct me, I'm not an infrastructure expert by any means, is that the reason state routes were paid for and maintained, i.e. Route 11 or Minut Avenue, to be that conduit between inertown transport?
It's called a U-RIP system, it's, or L-RIP, I think they changed the name. It's the Local Road Assistance Program, or I think that's the term. I, it's, it's an acronym, and it's basically-
Like everything else.
We supply to the state a, every year, we get around four hundred, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven, I think was the number, the six thousand that sticks in my head, that the state pays us for state-aid roads that we maintain. And we have to show, we have to demonstrate that we've spent that much money maintaining those roads over the past year to qualify for that money.
I, you, Minut Avenue. That would be, that pops, a state-aid road, Route 4. Is it possible not right now, though, because, I mean, that's a lot of numbers? As a follow-up item, could we get a list of those, those state-aid roads, kind of roughly what the cost is?
Within the urban compact, basically.
Just trying to find out what, you know, the cost versus reimbursement from the state is on some of those roads. But also identifying the roads that are quote-unquote, seldom used by Auburn citizens, but treated as major thoroughfares for outside in towns, and approximately what those roads are, and what the cost to maintain. Again, this is, I know, a very fluid formula, number, and it depends on a lot of variables. But I'd like to, I think the Counsel deserves to understand, as well as the citizens, to understand how we're subsidizing, subsidizing people to move from Auburn. If there's no other questions, turn that over to Mr. Creighton again. Thank you very much, by the way.
Sabrina. Right. So, I'm Sabrina Rest, the Recreation Director. The Recreation Department consists of six employees. You have myself, Administrative Assistant, three programmers, one which is split half-time with Ingersoll, and then a permanent part-time programmer, which was twenty hours a week, which has recently become vacant due to her retirement. The, the Recreation Department tries to provide a balance of programs that we offer to the communities. So, we have broken down into categories, special events, which would consist of the Art Walk, the Holiday Parade, Summer Fest, Winter Fest, the Farmer's Market. Family events, such as the Fishing Derby, the Father-Dotter Dance, which is coming up, and you can buy tickets and register for it now. Spring celebration, movies in the park, Bruins and Celtics games. We have our youth programs. Summer Day Camp is by far our biggest youth program with over two-hundred-and-fifty kids throughout kindergarten all the way to eighth grade. We have our youth sports programs, including soccer, football, cheerleading, basketball, skiing and snowboard lessons, lacrosse, and track and field. We have our adult programs. This past year, we did some renovations to the Hasty Community Center, and we now have a fitness room. So, we have slowly started to provide some adult fitness classes. a fitness room, so we have slowly started to provide some adult fitness classes. For adult sports leagues, we offer dodgeball, basketball for men's and women's, softball, which is probably one of our biggest adult leagues in the summertime. And then we have our senior or 50-plus programs, which include line dance, pickleball, walking in Ingersoll. We do various trips throughout the year. We have meals, there's some bingo and some lunch and learns. Let's dive just right into the challenges and opportunities. So one of the opportunities we have is with programming. We currently have more staff, which is great, and they're very energetic and excited to offer new programs. So hopefully, within the last two years, you may have seen an increase in some of the programs that we've been offering and that will just continue to grow. We've had some updates to the facilities and the fields. A good portion of what we are able to provide, we need a space to do it in. So this past year, there is some upgrades to the Hasty Community Center, which included the new fitness center. We've been able to then secure a senior center, which has been able now to provide a larger room for senior gatherings. Bingo is a, is a, is a big program that we offer through there. Eventually, we'll be trying to include a kitchen so that way then we can have a space that is fully functional for their needs and wants. With the fields, we are currently in the process of updating the Pettingill Park softball With the amount of adult leagues and adult softball that is played in this community, let alone the youth softball stuff that goes on, we have four softball fields that the quality is not, not as high as some other fields throughout the state, and in some cases, they're, they're very dangerous and unsafe. So with the upgrades to the Pettingill Park softball field, we'll be able to increase the amount of time we're actually use, using the field due to rainouts. Those, the drainage was the issue. So being able to have, between the facilities and the fields, renovation projects and updates, we'll be able to offer more programming and not cancel as much, but there's still a need for facilities and fields because we are maxed out with what we are able to, to book. And then the last opportunity is the sports tourism and special events. We have a great buzz right now going on around sports tourism and events in general, and this is really a great time for us to, you know, do a SWOT analysis of the rec department or, and the, you know, Norway and Ingersoll facilities and saying, "What are we offering? What are we not offering? How can we expand? What are areas that we're lacking in?" So some of the challenges we have is, when I took this position two years ago, we did not have a full-time custodian to oversee the Hasty Community Center. Now, we've added the Senior Community Center. Ingersoll is now fully open and operational and we don't have a full-time custodian. We were relying on Workfare for, for a while there, which sometimes, as great as they are, they're inconsistent, there's that language barrier, and they are only in the program for 150 days, so it's not consistent. Oftentimes, our facility is, is very messy after a weekend and then you come in and the place is trashed, so being able to do payroll has to get put on hold because you have to go take out some trash and, and clean the floors or the bathrooms and stuff like that. So a full-time custodian slash maintenance person is definitely a need right now for, for that area, which we would then utilize in both Ingersoll and Hasty to make sure that we're utilizing our, our expenses wisely. Advertising and promotion, we don't really have a budget for it. So we, the saying in recreation is that we operate on a shoestring budget. We try and, and take that rope and run as fast as we can with it. So we try and utilize as many free promotional items as possible, obviously Facebook, an interactive online brochure, flyers through the school, which is, is pretty low in cost. Anytime that we have the ability to do a big promotion, it would come from the registration fees or any sponsorship and donation, which you can't always predict in, in advance. So that has definitely been a struggle constantly. We're hearing, "Well, we didn't hear about this," or, "Well, how did I, how am I supposed to find out about that?" So we are trying to work with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to, to find ways that we can really access, you know, everybody in the community and get them that information. But again, it all goes back to, well, it, it's got to be funded or we got to utilize the free ones. And the last one, sponsorship and donations. This, probably in the last two years since I've been here, I've, I've noticed that a lot of our events are a balance between donations and sponsorships and then program registrations. I think that in order to have a very open and friendly rec department is that you have a balance between paid programming and free programming. A lot of times, you know, the taxpayers will say, "Well, my taxes already fund the department, how come I have to pay for all of these things?" And in order for us to keep the costs low in some of our programs is, it's offset by other revenues. A great example is summer camp, you know, will bring in some revenues so that way we can offer Winter Fest events for free or movies in the park. So at the end of the day, it balances out. The, the pool of businesses and organizations that we're pulling from, oftentimes, we get the, "Well, didn't I just talk to you guys?" "No, no, this is the first time we're contacting you." "Well, no, yeah, I just bought a sign for you." Okay, well, that's a different department, and a lot of times, you know, they don't understand that we're all asking the same group of people for the same things over and over again, and that can deter them to want to come and be a part of an event. You know, "I'm going to go ask for a $250 donation so I can..." Father-daughter dance cannot be as expensive, and then you have, you know, Norway going in asking for a wall sign, Germany going in asking for a wall sign, and that kind of stuff. So that's been a challenge, for sure, and not knowing how much you're going to get year to year from those donations and being able to plan a great event like Winter Fest is all generated off of, well, what can we, we bring in in order to offer all these events for free? So that's all I got.
Mr. Mayor, before you move forward, would you ask that Sabrina please talk about the outdoor athletic fields and them pieces? It's very important for a lot of us.
Yep. So the rec department is in charge of scheduling all the outdoor facilities that are non-school related. So that includes the softball fields, the baseball field, a festival plaza. We do have Chestnut Field and the Gully Courts, and then there's a few other parks. The Tot Lot is one, the Municipal Beach is another. So all of those, scheduling-wise, will go through our department. Occasionally, we do utilize the schools, schools' facilities and their fields. Walton Field is obviously our home to our, our youth football, home games and stuff. So we, we do work closely with Billy Hunter and the AD up at the high school and the middle school as well for the fields.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates on that or questions, if I could. So you're working on scheduling facilities and field usage by outside groups as well as your own rec programs in consult, in cooperation with, now Norway and Ingersoll, you handle your own bookings, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you handle yours and then as a separate, and then you're handling yours. Okay, got it. A couple of follow-ups. First of all, I'm sorry, council, does anybody else have any questions on the council right now, follow-ups?
I'm not sure if you'll get to this, but I think this really demonstrates, the idea of a SWOT analysis is a good one, but it demonstrates having to really look at the big picture, especially when we're talking about sports tourism. I think we all understand that we've got all these great resources, but to really make them work effectively and create synergy with all of them.
And I think I have that, and SWOT analysis asset kind of inventory list. I'll take it one step further, then I'll open back up to the council. We've got a new high school in the planning stages, and I just encourage cooperation and conversation with all of our different departments, school department and the city department, to look at what plans are on their side for fields, facilities, and assets. So we're not duplicating a revitalization of Pettingill softball field, for example. I'm just throwing this as an idea. When the school has it in their plan to add cloverleaf per the sports tourism recommendation. I'm just concerned, and I just want to voice that, about all of our inner workings between departments and duplication of efforts, short-term and long-term. Not to say it's happening, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention something because it is, you know, listening to this orientation's been great, and you start putting together these really interesting threads, and I'm sure you all are too, between departments, and these are always great exercises. So I say my piece there. I got a couple of comments here. I'm just going to keep on going because I got notes and I'll open back up, so I apologize. Do we have a facility and field master plan for recreation? Strategic plan, master plan, long-term? You talked about upgrading or working on the Pettingill softball field. Is there like a long-term, 10-years, you know, so another field needs to be replaced, et cetera?
Outside of the one that Counselor Walker referred to earlier, that would be the closest thing I would find in my office as far as what's been done.
We, we had a 20-year plan back then, now it's probably down to around 10-year. And of course, there's room for updates that I'm sure she'll probably work on as she moves forward.
And then going back to a couple of other things, but more importantly, one idea just popped into my head, only a recommendation. You mentioned sponsorships and donations, and you're not alone. I've heard this throughout the years in not just Lewiston, Auburn, but in communities across the state. Might be just an idea, a great chance to utilize some of the new updated Office 365 tools, i.e. OneNote, ChairFile, for a common file of area businesses, their levels of contribution, what did they contribute to last, who contacted them, for what event? That might help, actually help make anyone's job here more efficient, looking for sponsorships, without putting undue pressure on the same small grouping of donors. Throw that out there. I know that's been used in the greater Portland area before in the past, so. With that, and the more important thing is, got to give it to you, you didn't mention it, your Winter Fest this weekend, congratulations, hats off, round of applause.
Thanks for the petting zoo.
Thankfully, thankfully, I missed the petting zoo, though I did smell it a little bit later on at the ice park.
It lingered.
What was that? No, there's a lot of council members and community members that went to a lot of these places. I was there with you at 5:00 in the morning, and I left not that long thereafter when I did my piece, but you stayed and stuck it out. The hours, the dedication, not just by yourself, but by the rest of the staff and the various facilities, plus community participation, it cannot be overlooked. It probably can't be talked about enough. So there's a lot of thanks and thought, or thanks to people, not just in this room, but outside of this room, to put this together. It's a really, 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 really big deal when you can show a state that you can put together a world-class, state-class event, damn good event, excuse my language, for a shoestring budget. What did, what were your total budget, $80 in advertising, maybe? Did he make 80?
We hit the $60 mark.
Okay. I didn't know if, I didn't know if someone gave you a miracle 20 after that 60. So, okay, so for-
He's accepting donations.
Probably. No, phenomenal thing, and I think there's a lot to be taken from that, and I'm looking forward to, at a later date, kind of looking at and seeing what you can use and your learnings here and how you can make our Summer Fest and subsequent Winter Fest that much better. So the cooperation was phenomenal, even to the nongovernmental side, where you had St. Dom's, which is a private school in Auburn, really stepping forward in a large way to help add to the Winter Fest activities. So again, kudos to you and everybody, I can't say it enough. I know Leroy, I'm stealing his thunder because he was gushing all Sunday about everybody and all the help.
He got the great weather.
Got the great weather.
Great weather.
It was good.
It was perfect.
I want to just add a couple more things to your, your little scheme here for the Recreation Department. You only mentioned a few of your parks and stuff. I worked for the Parks Department for many years. People do not understand what she has at her fingertips because the city of Auburn, its councilors and directors over her have just forgotten about it or didn't really take it to heart. Mount Appetite is one of the best areas that the city of Auburn has got to offer, and there are so little dollars put in that park that very few of us even know it's there. So we need Sabrina to really bring this to life this year when it comes time for the council, the budget and everything. Whether we can afford it or not, that's another question, but we can't just keep letting Mount Appetite go to the wayside, so we really need your help. The other thing is the Tot Lot. Most people don't know what the Tot Lot is, they don't even know if it's in Auburn. That's, that's even the worst thing about it. The Tot Lot is a hidden jewel that's been there for over 100 years now, and we have a lease for 100 years, and we've probably been on that lease for 50 years. That was the old fish hatchery. That was one of the greatest things that youth had for many years with the Recreation Department. Somebody decided to let that ball drop and nobody paid attention, and it has been forgotten. We have a, I'm not sure if it's called a custodian or whatever. Person that lives there, we, we actually have a lease on the house. He takes care of it pretty much because the city, I don't think, has $1 budgeted for that whole, that whole area. He maintains the area for us for the cost, pretty much, of the house. We used to heat, paint the house, take care of the roof, we used to do it all. All we did was let him live there to maintain the area. Over the years, we got tighter and tighter and we had less money to spend, so he had to buy his own oil. First, it was 50/50, then it went to 75/25. Now, you, you heat it, if you can't heat it, then what are you going to do? You're going to go loose and whiz out. So of course, he heats it, maintains it mostly without any help, takes care of your grounds, takes care of the trash from people, Public Works, I'm sure, has to haul it off, but in any case, it's another jewel that we've forgotten about, and it's worth too much to this city to just let it sit there and go by the wayside. It has a fountain that sits there that is over 100 years old, came from the Auburn Water District, was donated to the city of Auburn. We said we would maintain it. I put it at the Tot Lot, as we call it. I call it Camp Exchange. Tot Lot, Camp Exchange, two different things because they sponsored it for us, so we gave it that name. That was an easy way of getting 300 bucks. Lot of money, to us it was, because we had no money, again, in the Recreation Department to maintain this place. That's why the Camp Exchange name came about. Then you've got your Municipal Beach. That beach, I can show you pictures of it, when we had 300 people swimming there every day of the week. Now, the city and its, its past manager said, "Oh, we shouldn't have more than 40 people there. We're going to pollute this water. People are going to get the itches, and they're going to get this, and they're going to get earaches." My God, what did the people do when there was 300 people swimming there? They get an earache, they get an itch, they didn't die. We're not going to die today either. Trust me. We need to look back at what we did have and what we do have, but we can find excuses not to maintain it, not to keep it, not to want it. It's all crap-ole. So we need to get on the ball, we need to bring the city of Auburn back to the people, give them opportunities to use it. It doesn't cost us a ton of money to do this. A little bit of time, we can do anything, but we got to want to do it. We can't just let it go by the wayside. The chief used to swim up there when he was a young guy.
He's still alive.
Probably why they closed it, yeah.
Yeah. I'll tell you what closed it more than anything, Route 4. That's why it closed, that Route 4. They have hurt that whole system. We should detour them out through Minnet and up through Rumford. That's what we should do. Thank you, Sabrina, great job.
Don, can you look at that, building a new interstate through Minnet into Rumford? Appreciate that. Sorry about that, but we tasked him out already. Is there any other comments about recreation from the council? I'd like to, we only, we're running a little bit past, so if there's one or two more quick questions or comments?
Overall, the overarching comment, this is, you know, what, if we ask ourselves what makes Auburn great, you're looking at it right now, all around this table and over there, because it's all of you and all of the people who work for your departments. We have quality people doing quality work, and I just can't commend you enough, and staying power as well. You know, you've hung around for a long time, and, and I think- You know, you've hung around for a long time, and I thank you for that, and that should make us very proud, because I know I am very proud. Thank you very much.
And, Councilor Walker, thank you for your historical renditions of each of those, because, you know what? We have forgotten some of that. I mean, I've been around a long time, too, but you know what? Tot Lot, I mean, I used to bring my kids there. We do have a lot of things here, but maybe we can have a little brain session or something, and remember all of this, and put it down for you to have, and then you can take that and take a look at what we have, what we're doing now, and what we can do. So, it's pushing us forward.
I would encourage the city staff, I know you already are, but I think a lot of, to your point and Councilor Walker's point, historical perspective, I think a lot of that is going to come through the Seska Centennial process. As brainstorming happens, as people keep talking about, you know, honoring our past, preserving our history, and then moving forward, no steps back, of course, there might be some really great ideas that come out of this whole process leading up to the anniversary. Okay, well, with this, we will turn this over to City Manager, Mr. Creighton, to wrap up.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Counselor, couldn't have said it any better, in terms of the strong team that we have here. This is a great group of department directors and great leadership team that we have here with everyone in the room, and they're just representative of the Auburn team that we have here with the city. So, thank you for your attention tonight and your participation, and I want to thank all the department directors for your participation, your enthusiasm. This was great. This gave the mayor and the councilors an opportunity to get to know you a little better, and for you to talk about what's going on in your departments, and what's important in terms of challenges and opportunities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that said, I am going to close tonight's workshop item, and we'll see you all next Monday.